Good evening, welcome. City of Belfast, Public Hearing Number One, Council of County Belfast City Hall.
Pursuant to the special amusement ordinance of the City of Belfast and the provisions of Title 28A, Section 1054 MRSA, this public hearing is on an application for a special amusement permit renewal for Pinchy Incorporated doing business as Three Tides for live entertainment, music, vocals, karaoke, DJ and dancing at Two Pinchy Lane Belfast, interior and exterior decks.
Opponents, proponents? Seeing none, just more comments. I attended the Friday night evening before the part of the Harbour Fest that Three Tides ran. It was loud, it was terrific. I hope it didn't bother anybody, but it was very professionally run and really I thought a credit to the community and so, you know, I know we had complaints about noise with them and it was a little noisy, but a little noise is good. People were having a great time, so thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no others, I call hearing close.
Public Hearing Number Two. In accordance with Title 28A, Section 653 MRSA 1964, this public hearing is to hear an application by Belfast TPM LLC doing business as The Residences at Tall Pines located at 24 Martin Lane Belfast for renewal, malt and venice, other assisted living class liquor license, interior only.
Opponents, proponents? Seeing none, I call hearing close.
Public Hearing Number Three. This public hearing is for the purpose of taking testimony and comment from the public with respect to the proposed issuance of a general obligation bond to be issued by the City of Belfast in a principal amount not to exceed $800,000 to the main municipal bond bank. The proceeds be used for the purpose of financing construction of the waterfront walkway. Has brought to the public attention at the first reading at the meeting of the City Council held on August 7, 2012. The City Council will consider adoption of this, of the order immediately following the close of the public hearing, which order authorizes the issuance of the bond in the principle of not to exceed $800,000. In addition, the City of Belfast will consider the proposed issue of note in the amount of $400,000 in anticipation of a grant from the State of Maine, Community for Maine Futures, administered by the CDBG to be used for the future to finance, excuse me, to be used to finance the construction of a waterfront walkway.
Opponents, proponents? State your name.
Blaine Richardson, Five Delmo. I'm completely against bonding any of this debt. Our property taxes are going up 10 percent. The interest and the assemblage fees for this bonding won't be picked up until next year and just guessing on rates, plus or minus, if you take 3 percent of 1.2 million dollars, it's plus or minus $432,000 a year in interest. I would suggest that if we were going to raise that money for interest, that we raise that money and put it aside and then do it the next year and the next year and pay cash for doing this project. I'm really disturbed on borrowing for the CDBG grant money. It's really akin to me going to the bank and saying, "I would like to take a loan against my future winnings at Hollywood slots." There is no guarantee that we will see that money. In fact, we have no idea who the governor will be in two years. We really need to start thinking about the citizens here in Belfast, the financial load that they're picking up. I'm not sure how you cover, you know, the carrying costs of this bonding. I don't know where you see the increased revenues coming from. You heard several meetings ago from Jane, you know, foreclosure information, you know, the economic information. Frankly, I don't know where people are going to, you know, come up with a 10 percent and I'm talking about the people that live on the edge, that extra 10 percent when our fuel prices are going up, our oil prices are going up as we speak. You know, they've just spiked this week. I'm very frustrated, you know. On the one hand, you'll suggest that, well, we don't participate, but you know, when we do participate, you know, my feeling is it falls on deaf ears. And also, I, you know, this walkway, right from the get-go, had a lot of opponents. But the process that we use today for these projects pretty much is set up so it nullifies the naysayers. And I went to several of the meetings early on and we took down the nays, but they all disappear and the project keeps marching forward. And this project really has some, you know, dark edges to it. I mean, it, we're doing a very expensive portion right here because we don't want to take the walkway that we already have and talk to a private landowner to, you know, of notoriety in Belfast across his property. But it doesn't matter when you get out into the hinterland and they're not so important people, you can, you know, pretty much do what you want to do. I can't express enough my frustration. In this economy, the federal government is broke, the state is broke, and yet you just want to keep on spending money. And if that's the case, and we can't live without this walkway, I suggest that we do what we've done with projects in the past. Dog park, private funds. The common, that was private funds that was, you know, donated to the city. The footbridge, private fundraising. In this economy, to go out and borrow 1.2 million dollars for a walkway that pretty much exists right now, albeit it's not beautiful, but you can walk it, is just unbelievable. And my appeal out there to TV land, you other property owners, I'm going to come to every single meeting here and be the screaming eagle. And I know a lot of people, I've heard from almost two dozen people that say, "Keep it up," that don't want to waste their time to come in here and speak to a body that doesn't appear to, you know, to listen to typical taxpayers. Folks, you're at a crossroads here and the other thing I'd like to share with you, we're a little bit late, but we're moving ahead. We're doing a charter amendment initiative. We have the language. We're going to set up the commission and we're going to, you know, if you folks cannot demonstrate prudent restraint, then we'll see if we can get the citizens to amend the charter and limit your discretionary spending. We don't have it. We just don't have it. And in the years, the 10 years that I've been here, you know, our white collar government has ballooned, ballooned, it's huge. In the planning office, we have every day, the people that we have there, the total, that's 32 hours of functioning work. You multiply out those hours, I'd like to know what we're getting as citizens. We're spending a lot of money. It doesn't fix roads, it doesn't collect taxes, and we use our money, we use budgetary lines to go out and hire consultants to do the work that the people in these offices ought to be doing. And it's just got to stop. The people here do not have bottomless pockets and it's a shame. There's just, you know, it's out of control and we will find a way to bring some control. Thank you.
Thank you, Maire.
Walter, just remind people about three minutes.
Well, this is, this is not open to the public. This is public hearings right now. We haven't got there yet and I will when we get there.
Rita Horsie, Hunt Road Belfast. First thing I'm going to do is read a, an email, if it's all right with you all, that I, from Lori Allen, who is, she had to leave because her daughter is sick, but she had sent an email to Marina and I'm going to read it. This email is per-
Maybe that's something you ought to do with open to the public?
No, this has to do with the, with the-
With this here?
The Harbour Walk.
Okay.
This email is per Belfast resident Rita Horsie's last meeting, saying that the council claims they don't get input from residents. "I hear you over and over going to bat for the Crosby School and it is hurtful that you have never mentioned Seaview Terrace. This implies biased goals. As my representative, I am demanding the halting of grants and bonds for the Harbour Walk, rail trail revitalization, any window dressing at the 8/21/12 public approval meeting at the City Hall. All of the proposals are once. Save Seaview Terrace's lives and homes. City officials have used our properties and destroyed them free of charge since approximately 1985." That's it. "At the 7/17/12 meeting and 1/12 meeting, council refused to hear 'stop spending,' challenging and defending any rebuttals or please stop it." As I said, that's from Lori Allen. She lives on Seaview Terrace. Now, I'm going to speak about the, this is me, about the Harbour Walk. I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what Blaine said. There are a lot of projects that are, that have been once and that have been, that have succeeded because of public funding. I shouldn't say public fund, private funding, people are, contribute money. $2 million approximately has been raised by the Friends of Fort Knox and they've been able to redo the roof of Fort Knox, they've been able to redo the stockade, the powder magazine, and what they do is they have events and they contribute this money right back to Fort Knox to keep it going. As Blaine said, the dog, the dog park, public, private funding. The walking bridge, private funding. Why can't we have a committee and get people together? If people in Belfast want this Harbour Walk, they are all going to be willing to contribute to it. They're going to be willing, you can get a group together, they're going to be able to have events to raise money for this Harbour Walk. There is no reason to borrow 1.2 million dollars, which is what it essentially amounts to, without, and there's no payback. How is this going to contribute to the economy of Belfast? There's no payback. The Y, the Y raised money for their pool. Now, the town did pay some, but primarily it was private funding that built that Y pool. Had they wanted to borrow the money, that would have been a legitimate purpose for borrowing money. They get payback, they have memberships, they have events, they make money. This Harbour Walk is not going to make any money. You just don't borrow without a payback. You're going to saddle people in this city with 1.2 million dollars in debt additional. For what? And as far as walking, the gentleman last week, last council meeting, said that it's a great walking place. Belfast, all of Belfast is a great walking place. I go out at lunch every day and walk all around Belfast. We are so fortunate to have a nice town or city that we can walk in. We don't need the Harbour Walk for walking. Thank you.
My name is Paula Johnson. I live in Belfast. While I support the walk, in many aspects, I caution the amount of money that we are using to spend on that and agree for one point about getting, looking at lots of ways that we can also raise the revenue for a Harbour Walk in addition to money I believe that the city should input into the, into the walk. What I want to say is, I mean, it's very hard to know that the governor is going to actually give us money and he's very short sighted in the bigger picture and I want to say that also to the two people who came. I get all about, about tight budgets, but I do want to say that a Harbour Walk that leads to a bigger walk does have a lot of economic benefits that will benefit Belfast. There, all across the country, bicycle and pedestrian facilities are proving to wise economic development, investment for communities through which they pass. There's been lots of studies in all kinds of places. I just was up in Prince Edward Island and I took advantage of their walkway that I didn't know existed and had a great time upon visiting Vermont, Burlington. I didn't know they had a bike path used from their, or walkway around that was part of their railroad. We were there visiting for a hockey tournament and discovered this and we decided to come back for vacation because we wanted to check out the walk. Believe it or not, that was one of the things we did. And we spent our day on our bikes, walking, I mean, riding and checking out the walkway that went through lots of little towns. It was amazing to me to see all walks of life being on this, and I'm talking all walks of life. Children, elderly people, people in wheelchairs, you know, every imaginable, dogs, happy, healthy energy that was going on, very friendly, vibrant. And I got the same feeling from the town that we were in, so much so that we visited again and even looked at property to buy and moved there. I mean, that was, that's one of the things that we're considering as a family move because we liked the area so much, because everybody's out walking around, there's really nice energy to the city and that, that walkway leads to so many things. I just want to say that also according to research, and this was done in, many years ago actually, that it says, "According to research, Rails and Trails Conservancy, 85 million people used trails alone in 1994." That was just when it began to become the thing around. Economic benefits are convenience stores, bicycle shops, campgrounds, bed and breakfast establishments, restaurants, and all of those re-contribute to the economy in different ways as well. Also, they found that it encouraged vacation-like trips. It was ranked third among the 39 featured identified by home buyers, crucial factors for home purchasing. It helped in areas where there were foreclosures. Burlington, Vermont itself has never had any problems with their, their housing, has remained steady through this whole downside of the economy through which they have a lot, I mean, it is a city bigger than Belfast, however, Harbour Walk is a really, I mean, their walk is a very important part of what drives people to come there. Also, as a benefit, that it, this was a study done by another trail in another state that their trail cost 191, 191, that when it first contributed 191,893 dollars, it returned in state tax revenue of 303,000 dollars. So it actually contributed back from sales, property and income taxes because the economy boosted from the rail trails. And then lastly, I just want to say social benefits. Social benefits have a huge impact on economy and if you think that, this is why I say the broad, the narrow scope of the governor doesn't understand, but bicycling, walking and all those kind of things offer many things and I agree there are a lot of places to walk in Belfast, but flat places, no. Places that are, you know, that everyone's out kind of, you know, going out and doing that, safe places to ride your bikes with kids. It's also been proven that, you know, moderate exercise is proven to be a risk, to lessen the risk of heart disease and various things, depression, obesity. And it also has been proven that places that have rails, what they call river trails and greenway corridors and walkways, they found that the claims from people that were in these communities went down, they, it was 14 percent lower in claims for medical insurance for the health benefits of having a walkway like that. And again, lastly, in the environmental, just protecting the environment here with the type of trail that this will be leading to. But what I want to just go back to is cautionary, which is the money that it costs to provide this beginning stage to what I think is a wonderful thing for our community. And that is, you know, just if there is a way to find other means for that money, whether it is having fundraising or a committee that contributes, you're going to need that anyway to maintain walkways and things like that, that the city most likely wouldn't necessarily contribute 100 percent to. I'm saddened that, that the bond that we voted on is not coming to fruition, so I do support taking this risk for these other benefits, but I also would like to see some effort made to contribute in some other way as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Larry Thai from Belfast. I agree with Blaine with regard to his concerns about the design of the south end of the Harbour Walk, but I'm really here to offer several reasons in support of the issuance of bonds to finance this project. The waterfront is Belfast's major attraction and it will be further enhanced by the completion of this Harbour Walk. Additional pedestrian traffic, particularly along the commercial portion of this Harbour Walk, will no doubt lead to increased business for the merchants in that area, so there is a payback for the investment. But for this reason, I would like to see the project start at the north end and finish that portion first. I think there's a bigger dividend on that end. Tax increment financing, or TIF, I believe, can, can be used to finance this project. There will be increased revenues from the Front Street Shipyard and my understanding of the TIF program is that it's intended to upgrade areas where development has occurred and this is, seems a very appropriate expenditure of those TIF revenues. I do agree that the project has taken longer and has cost more than it should have. We've probably spent more on consultants than was necessary, but further delaying it is not going to reduce these costs and interest rates are never going to be lower than they are right now. So, for me, the bottom line is that the Harbour Walk is a good investment in the quality of life of Belfast. It will enhance accessibility for the public to enjoy our beautiful harbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Maire. Okay.
Mary Mortier Belfast. I am in favor of the Harbour Walk, I am in favor in the bond and I am in favor of the note. I am not going to repeat statistics that several people ahead of me spoke of, but I am going to reinforce that the economic development potential of the Harbour Walk along the amount of parkland that we have along our beautiful waterfront is money in the bank come future days, months and years. We have a very special harbor, we have a very special waterfront and the amount of parkland is very special. And it's unfortunate that many people in the community have not had the opportunity in their lives to visit other places to see what life is like in places that don't have these advantages. The waterfront is free, it is open to the public, it doesn't cost you to go down to the waterfront and walk along the Harbour Walk. That's a benefit to the whole community, no matter what your means or abilities. I do want to say that I am in agreement of the north end being the beginning, not the south end. There is a walkway already on the south end, we have the little issue in the middle with ownership that kind of changes a route around instead of going straight through and I do believe that the, the more immediate economic benefit is starting at the north end and heading to the south end. I have been following closely for, I think it's been two years or so, but one of the things I didn't hear mentioned, and I did get here late, was that we have some retired commitments that have been retired this past budget year and I hadn't heard that mentioned, that that's something, that there's a balance there for new bonds and new notes. I am, I am very strongly in favor of this Harbour Walk and I also want to reinforce the statement about that interest rates will never be lower. It is a draw to this community that we cannot even imagine because of the quality of life that it will bring to this town for the good. It's a wonderful place now, but we're going to see even more wonderfulness. Just driving here tonight, coming across the bridge, it is such a magnificently beautiful evening out there and my thought was, what a beautiful night to be walking along the harbor and enjoying it. And I'm sure I'm not alone, see all the people that use the footbridge and what a nice thing that will be when they can just swing onto the rest of the harbor and go across. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I'm Martha Clark from Belfast. I really don't want to add anymore. I don't know your name.
Blaine.
Blaine. But I would like to, have you really considered, I think Blaine spoke for me. He was right on what I would like to say to you. And I'm also interested in, the City of Belfast will consider the proposed issue of a note in anticipation of $400,000. You anticipate. I'm told that part of the reason that our taxes are 10 percent rise this year, which is a terrible amount of a rise in taxes, is due to the fact that you anticipated money from the state that you didn't get and therefore we're up for it. To me, that seems like double taxation. We pay it to the state, you don't get it, so we pay it to you. I'm not in favor of the Harbour Walk because I don't think we can afford it and as far as places to walk in Belfast, my goodness, Belfast is open. Has anybody here even thought about the Water District walks that are four and a half and several miles long and open and wonderful? Take your dogs, go and enjoy it. If you want to walk on flat surfaces, we've got that. If you want to walk to the harbour, like Mary Mortier says, it's open to the public. There's no, no reason you can't get to the waterfront. So, thank you, Blaine, for speaking for me.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I call hearing close.
A minute, please.
Oh. I didn't see him.
Sorry.
I can get it. This one's fine, I think. I want to thank Mr. Richardson too because I feel the very same way that he does. Maybe- more adamantly. Uh, I don't think taking any bonds out at this time is going to be good for anybody. My name's Deborah Paritas. I live at 69 Ryan Road, Belfast, Maine. And I too sit home and watch these city council meetings, and I feel like I'm this little peon sitting there at home, and you people are the judgment callers of Belfast. It's like, where am I? We fought like hell to get that in there, and everybody was so against it on the council. They refused Lowe's, they refused Tim Hortons, you know? What do we have here for people that aren't college graduates? Not a heck of a lot. So, I'm against taking any bonds out, and I'm against upping the taxes on anybody here in Belfast, rich or poor. And I'm against the rail trail at this time, and I'm asking you to shelve it for a few years until we do get ahead enough that maybe it could be done, or either that or do it privately. And another thing that I want to say, poor Lori Allen come in here about her back lawn being washed away. Complaints were made that she lied, complaints were made that she called people names. Well, this is for Mr. Hurley, because the last city council meeting, when you were talking about the signs, do you remember talking about the signs?
I'm not sure what you're speaking about, but go ahead, I'm listening.
You spoke that the public was stupid.
No, I don't think I ever said that.
Yes, you did.
Let's not get disrespectful then.
No, I'm not getting disrespectful, any more than he did.
Well, we're talking about...
The public is not stupid. Well, I'll tell you, you're getting to be just like them.
Well, all right, so be it. We're talking about a walkway here.
Yeah.
And we're not talking about Mr. Hurley and Lori Allen at this time. We're talking about a walkway.
I'm putting my opinion out there.
So, let's keep it to that.
Well, I just want you to know that you're just as wrong as other people are wrong. You're not sitting on any throne behind those desks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Petra Hall, Belfast. As a ci, as a citizen and taxpayer of Belfast, I personally am in favor of pursuing the Harbor Walkway, since I believe it can only help our city be more attractive to tourists who visit here and enjoy our ever-interesting and evolving waterfront. And it certainly would provide some nice benefits for those of us who live here and would use it for walking, and the continuation of the wonderful walking that we already have and that has been acknowledged. I say this after two successive weekends of friends and relatives who came to Belfast for a visit, and I'm kind of exhausted from it. Um, we all enjoyed walking and seeing the sights, including the Bounty when it was here, and everyone in our group helped to stimulate the economy along with the other hordes that were in Belfast, um, this summer. The Bounty was a big draw, and having a walkway along the water would, I think, be something that would be even more enticing for more traffic, uh, whether by land or by sea. I would also, uh, assume that various groups in town which are involved with economic issues, as well as recreation and arts and tourism, would be supporting this, this walkway. And I only had time to contact the Belfast Chamber of Commerce to see what their views were. And as I understand it from the president of the chamber, the chamber has been very supportive of this project and wants to see it happen, and they can anticipate the overall benefit to the area and downtown as well. They also have received feedback from other towns that have completed similar projects, and it has been demonstrated that it is very positive to those communities. When I say positive, I mean positive in terms of people coming and also in terms of the economics, the, the feedback that, or the payback that happens. I would agree that this is something that is an investment for all of us for the long term. I do want to make it clear, though, that the chamber does not involve itself in how projects get funded, and also that the chamber recognizes that how we pay for it, which is, of course, discussion here, is a decision that the city of Belfast needs to make, so I don't want to misrepresent their position. I only contacted them because I wanted something official from somebody to, you know, besides what's been in the paper. Now, some folks who are against it, um, are against it philosophically, or they're against bonds generally, or any spending or borrowing in this economy, or maybe any economy. Um, my feeling is that with the governor taking the unusual step of withholding our already allotted bond money, I would think we wouldn't want to lose out on the opportunity to move this project forward now as an investment while we're waiting for him, you know, because we don't want to be waiting for him to either change his mind or for some of the conditions to change so that money might come forward. The interest rates, as we've heard, as we know, uh, for us to issue our own bond in the meantime, the interest rates are historically low, and to put off this project to some future date risks a few financial issues that, you know, we, we need to consider, like larger debt later. Um, construction costs and material costs are just going to go up, so why not do it now? Now, what is interesting about hearing people talk, um, you know, I'm thinking that if the, the bonds are cheap, but we have to pay the interest on the bonds, let's be creative then about how we pay off the interest. You know, if you want to do some fundraising for that, let's do that, but let's not throw everything out. Uh, let's try to take in consideration what, what all of our needs are, because there are pressing economic needs in Belfast, and in Maine, and beyond, uh, and all of those must be worked on. Um, I don't have the solutions, I wish I did. Um, the money has already been, as I understand, available for us, I, from what I've been told, it will not take away from existing needs in the city. So, I believe the time is now, and we should, pardon the pun, move forward on this walkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Is there anyone else?
If, if this walkway...
Your name?
I'm sorry, Rita Horsie-Hunt Road, Belfast. If this walkway is funded through private funding, it's not going to make it any less valuable for, as a walkway, as a place to encourage people to come. Now, I believe your, your company came even though we didn't have a walkway, but are, if say you really want the walkway, that's fine, but let's fund it privately. Get a committee together for all these people who are in favor of it, and be very innovative and raise the money for the walkway.
Okay.
And that way, it will not affect our taxes.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Seeing none, I call the hearing close.
Public hearing number four. This public hearing is regarding proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 80, In-Town Design Review. This meeting is the second reading of the proposed ordinance amendment. The provisions of Chapter 80 affected by the proposed amendments include, but are not limited to, expanding the amount of areas subject to Type 1 permit review. A Type 1 permit requires mandatory compliance with conditions established by the committee. Provisions to the type of activities which require permit review, revisions to the standards that apply to the demolition of existing structure, and revisions to the appeals process. The proposed amendments also are associated with the council's consideration of reenactment of Type 1 permit requirement.
Opponents, proponents? Seeing none, I call the hearing close. The here...
For four. Um, for the, for the hearing on four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He wore all. She was in the hall, she couldn't get...
Well, come on in and sit down so you can hear what's going on.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Mary Mortier, Belfast. Um, I've been studying this a great deal. I did get notice as in a butter, uh, or within the range of getting notice, and, um, I've studied it a great deal and, uh, have followed the outlines of it and understand what they are. Um, I have two comments. One is that currently the committee that's chosen for each review consists of five people that are kind of drawn from a hat out of a, a pot of 25. Um, I feel that five is not enough. I feel that it should be seven. Uh, in viewing these reviews, it, there's a lot of very subjective material, especially under Section 80-6, the guidelines for new construction, renovations, and restorations. And it's a lot of, um, very architectural art form type, uh, review, and it references in almost every subsection, uh, references to compatibility with surrounding structures, buildings, open public spaces, et cetera. We don't have a cookie cutter town except for two blocks of 1880's brick continuous buildings that are of note because of their historical registry, historic registry status. But this area, as proposed, is much larger than that, and, um, has such a variety of buildings and public spaces and sightlines left, right, up, and down, that, um, it's, it's, if you go out and stand on any street and try to analyze this section of, of subsections and look at the various buildings that might come up for, for review, it's a very, very subjective situation. And, um, I'm not necessarily in favor of committees, and I'm certainly not in favor of big committees, but where it's such, such subjective information, um, that is guiding major decisions which are mandatory on business owners, um, I just think that a couple more people couldn't hurt. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I thought you said you, I think I missed it. I thought you had two points. I just, I think I missed it. I had one point. Maybe a second. Oh, committee?
Committee of seven.
Okay.
The, the Section 80-6 is rather onious, and, um, you know, I know why it's there. We had one bad apple in the pot, in the barrel, and everybody overreacted. Um, so I know why it's there.
But the change you're recommending was the one, go to seven committee.
Yeah, I just feel that seven would be a better number to get a broader cross-section. Now, the first was, I, I didn't feel there should be a change. The outline, I think, is a good one. Sorry.
Peter Jakes, Belfast Laundry. Uh, I was here when you did the, the red section there, or the historical section, and I was against it then, and I'm still against it. Uh, I know the city's doing well downtown, the stores are full, and everybody tells us what businesses are making money. Well, I'm here to tell you that we might be holding our own, but we've lost some businesses in the city and across the, the state, and after the election, none of us know what's gonna, what's gonna happen. Uh, I just hate when you start putting restrictions and more paperwork on our small business people. We just don't have the, the manpower, we're working all the hours we can right now. Uh, I'm still working at my age, I shouldn't be. Uh, I'm just opposed to it, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else out there that wants to speak to this item? Seeing none, I call the hearing close. Uh, City of Belfast Regular Council Meeting, Number Four. Aldo Otto, roll call.
Mayor Walter Ash Jr.
President.
Councilors Marina Delano, Roger Lee.
Here.
Eric Sanders.
President.
Michael Hurley.
Here.
Nancy Hamilton.
Here.
City Manager Joseph Slocum.
President.
And myself, Admin Assistant City Manager Jonika Lundy.
But the ladies... It's great. The ladies of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for adoption of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I would like to move, rearrange the agenda a little bit so that five, uh, is moved back between seven and eight, and the same on, at the end, where 11 would be moved between 12 and 13. Uh, I know I've felt a lot of frustration at times in my inability to respond to people during open to the public, and I know the public has felt very frustrated that they can't get a response from us, and I think having our communications coming before them, and they speak, and then we don't get to speak there, and then there's no opportunity ever to speak, or at least to tell people what, what we think. Um, so I would just like to move four between seven and eight, and...
Is that all right with everybody?
Five between seven and eight. Eleven between 12 and 13.
Right, actually, Mike, you're making this proposal as one we would, we would adopt in every meeting going forward.
We could try it, yeah.
I, I would support it, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we talked about it publicly at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, five goes between seven and eight?
Mm-hmm. And 11 would go between 12 and 13.
Yeah.
I, I also have a couple of proposed amendments, I think I've typed them up and put them around at your desk. We have a request from Belfast Area High School, uh, Liberian Education Fund, they have a fundraiser at Steamboat Landing on Monday, August 28th. Um, also associated with a potential borrowing, I'd like to add a 10H, Number One, that's for adoption of a no arbitrage policy. And finally, 10I, we would have two things in 10I, we have salt bids and the word of a salt bid, we have sand bids, winter sand bids, and the word of a winter sand bid. So, I'd just like to split them out to 10I1 and 10I2. I just want to, because I, I appreciate, I want to support the, uh, request, uh, about the Liberian issue, but I'd like to talk about it just one little bit about the boat house, so can we just put that maybe on the first item there? I have that as 10B, Number One. Oh, okay. Pretty close to the front. Okay, good. I didn't, I thought that was on one. Actually, I would recommend it be the first thing. Okay.
Okay, anything else? We need a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's a vote. Okay, acceptance of the minutes of regular council meeting of August 7th, 2012.
Move we accept the minutes?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? The vote. Open to the public, please state your name and the town you're from, and we're going to have a three-minute time limit on open to the public, because you'll get a chance to speak at the end of the meeting. That ain't enough.
Good evening. My name is Peter Samson, I live on 26th and Ray in Belfast, and, um, I'm here tonight with Mr. Lyon himself, Ray Hall, and, uh, we would like to invite you to a walk, uh, on the Veterans Memorial Bridge. This is our 10th year, um, that we've been up there, and, uh, it started by the, the Lions Club under the direction of Ray Hall, and, um, every year we've come to invite the, uh, the council, and we invite the fire department, the police department, and anyone who would like to come with us. Um, our goal is to take and, uh, get as many people on the bridge as we can on, on, um, September 11th, um, as a memorial to all the people that, to remember the tragedy of 9/11, all those that lost their lives and, and lost their loved ones. Um, we've had the participants in the past, we've had the VFW, American Legion Color Guard, National Guard, police department, fire department, local and state representatives, Waldo County Search and Rescue, uh, mayor, city council, teachers, and students. Um, we would like to have as many people participate as possible. Um, we want to fill the bridge, remember, reflect, and honor those who lost their lives and loved ones, um, those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedoms, and those that are, uh, continue to keep us safe. We are going to be, um, gathering, um, up at the bridge, uh, to begin the walk at 8:45, um, that's the time the first plane hit in New York, and we'll be walking the bridge continuously until 10:05, when the last plane crashed in Pennsylvania. Um, once again, if you can come at any time, spend, spend a few minutes with us, or spend the whole walk, we'd love to see you there. And, um, and that's about it. And, um, I'm also a proud Army dad, so thank you, folks, and hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Rita Horsie-Hunt Road, Belfast. Believe it or not, this doesn't have anything to do... Believe it or not, this doesn't have anything to do with spending. I just want to comment on the signage, the Belfast signage. It's been sort of bothering me that the signs are gorgeous, the signs coming into the city. And the Belfast part of it is great, but you can't read what's underneath at night. So if there's any way that you could make those signs, because I know you all deal with signage, if there's any way you can make that a little bit larger so people who are coming in who don't know where they're going can really find out where things are, I think it would be a very good thing.
Larry Tyer, Belfast. The last several meetings, we've heard quite a bit of anger directed toward the city council, I guess, engendered by the increase in the property tax rates. I'd like to posit that this anger is really misdirected. I think it would be better directed to the state legislature that has consistently ignored a citizen mandate to fund education at the 55%. And those costs then would be paid through sales and income taxes rather than the local property taxes, which is a much fairer system of taxation. The spending cuts at the federal, spending cuts and tax cuts at the federal and state levels invariably drive up local property tax rates. The sharp cutbacks in federal revenues to education, for example, have driven up the education costs not only in Belfast but in most other communities. And the state cuts in municipal revenue sharing has had similar effects on the cities. I think the city council has acted responsibly in increasing the middle levy. They, after all, don't set the budgets for the county and the school district. They just are charged with raising the revenue to pay for those budgets. You do control the city budget, and it seems to me you've been pretty careful watchdogs of expenditures here. Roger Lee is the only councillor currently on the council who was on the council when I served, but I can testify that Roger is a real budget hawk. He constantly challenged and questioned every item in that budget. So I'd like to compliment the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Quay, Six Pym Obscott Terrace in Belfast. You know, at four o'clock in the afternoon, you want to address the council with all good intentions, but by about eight o'clock, if you've worked from seven to five physically, you're really tired and you just want to go home. But anyways.
Tell me about it.
Well, I've been watching everybody on TV, and I really didn't want to get involved, but it's hard not to get involved when something is really important. There seems to be a problem with our real estate taxes, and I see it a little bit differently than most of the folks that spoke earlier. I also know I have no monopoly on the truth, so I hope I don't offend anybody here tonight. I thought I knew what was going on in Belfast, but I'll tell you. The eye-opener in the last four months was the relationship between the real estate taxes going up and the constant increase in the school budget. I kept wanting to be mad at you guys, but it's not you guys. There's a big disconnect in the minds of many citizens. Many don't understand that the drain on the real estate taxes is the school system. Taxes are up, are going to go up 10% this year, and you really didn't hold the line in the last three years. You just borrowed from the surplus. But most of it was not for the city, but again, for the school system. We need a mechanism to address this. Why do we need a mechanism to address this? Well, here's why. Any idea how many local jobs depend on the real estate market? I'll bet we have 100 realtors in town, bankers, lawyers, appraisers, EBS, Vikings, home supply, carpenters, electricians, plumbers, masons, plasters, printers, interior designers, landscapers, home furnishing, and on and on and on. Yes, we have a national downturn in real estate. Everyone heard about it, but this town, Belfast, is doing really well. People should be waiting in line to buy houses here in Belfast. Why aren't they? Why aren't they? The market is very slow. Here's why, in my opinion. Want to hear what I hear over and over again? Why should I buy or build in Belfast when I can go to the surrounding towns and pay one-half to one-third of the real estate taxes for basically the same property? Why? Why are our taxes so much higher than the surrounding towns? They're in the school system, aren't they? They're in the school system. I'm suspicious that we are picking up the tab for the surrounding towns. We all want a good school system, but if we kill the goose that lays the golden egg, the real estate market, we can't support it. And the goose is limping right now. We need to shine a light on the school system and make good economical decisions. We're not getting enough bang for our bucks.
Time's pretty near up, Wayne. Keep going, but we've got a few more seconds.
We need to make decisions that make sense. Not just the school board. The council needs to get involved. The citizens need to get involved. We have a problem with rising real estate taxes. We need to address it. It looks like the rise is coming from the school system. You guys are taking the blame, but you're probably not to blame. So we have a problem. There's something wrong, and we kind of need to work together and shine a bright light on the school system to find out what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wasn't here for the last council meeting or many before, but I just want to thank Belfast for the street party. I was able to paint a lot of faces there and do a lot of things, and I actually really enjoyed my time and all the kids and the families that were out and about. And I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but when I went home, I could hear the music from my house up on Congress Street, and it was really enjoyable. It was nice to hear all the people having a great time. So I appreciate that effort that was put into it, and I would love to see it continue annually. So just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you.
A couple of things I want to say, but first want to thank the city council, including our mayor, for all you folks here. Yes, yes.
Karen May.
No, 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 no. No, it's a good thing. And that's for all the hard work that you've been doing, including the incredible, and also that includes the incredible amount of money that you are saving the citizens of Belfast. I mean, really, folks, you're saving us all money because you make such minimal amounts, right, for your stipends. You don't get paid lavishly. You don't have company cars. I mean, let's face it. I mean, we have a citizen government, right? I also want to thank all of those in the planning board and other city committees who spend long hours unpaid, volunteer, long hours to keep the city going. So when we talk about the amount of money that we need to spend on vital services, et cetera, let's also think about the things that we're saving and that we're getting because people are involved. So, you know, let's look at that, please. Let's put that into the financial and economic equation. Now, from what I understand, and I think Larry tied this in beautifully to all of the issues about, you know, where Belfast stands versus the county with city money versus, I mean, with taxes for city expenditures versus public schools and the county. You know, as I understand it, our budget already is streamlined, and we have to pay all those other expenses, but what's left to cut, really? You know, jobs, city jobs, essential services. Again, if we use the same argument, well, let's not argue. Let's just say that in this economy, you don't want to be cutting essential jobs in the city of Belfast. I think that's really important. I like having, I like having the police out there when needed. I like having my roads fixed, all of our roads being fixed, et cetera. So, you know, again, let's keep all of these things in mind as we look at the issues. Now, specifically about one of the issues that's coming up about the Belfast laundromat and the tree outside that, I understand that the tree is on laundromat premises, right? So obviously, as a citizen, I don't really have a say in that, but I'm hoping that something could be worked out with the city and with the laundromat so that we can keep that tree there or somehow carve it or whatever, rather than cutting it down entirely. I understand that there is a need to have a sign there, and that's certainly understandable. Luckily, we all do know where the Belfast coin laundromat is, so for many of us, that's not an issue. But, you know, maybe we can work together to figure out some better sign placement so that that tree can left standing, be left standing somehow. I just want to point out, the city has spent a lot of time and energy and, you know, it's mostly volunteer energy, to replace and plant new trees around the city. So it kind of would be a shame to take down a tree that's existing and, you know, it's so, so big and full and everything. So big and full that it's covering a sign. But anyway, if we can work it out, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? See, and none. We'll move along to... C, I guess, communications. Except in some minutes.
Absolutely. Good communication.
I actually don't have anything to communicate. I appreciate that we moved it. Thank you. I've got one now. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the Belfast Rotary for putting on the Harbor Festival this past weekend and all their volunteers. These are hard events to run, lots of volunteers, expensive events to run, and I couldn't make it. I was at a family wedding, but I would, I want to say thank you to them because I know they worked on it for almost 10 months to get ready for it, and every one of these events in Belfast helps the city in some way.
I would like, I'll speak to the school board during the committee reports, but September 9th, I know Mr. Sanderson was here, but September 9th, the Weiner Fest is happening down at Steamboat Landing. Say no more. Weiner Fest is here.
Party.
And then there's this PAWS event that at the last council meeting, I think we gave approval to the boathouse in late October, and they're looking to potentially have, you know, make it a five-day event and have all kinds of things. I was speaking with Lorraine Brown, who's apparently involved in the project. So that's going to be a five-day festival if you're an animal lover, animal owner, or tolerated animals. They're going to have several events lined up, and I'm sure, and that's the former Camden Rockport Animal Rescue League, which is now called PAWS, and that's who we fund for our animal service. So it's part of an event to create more awareness in specifically Belfast about the fact that they're there to serve us and be a part of this community. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Anyone else? Nancy?
Last week, I received an email from a constituent. She was dismayed at the attitude that some councillors in the past have displayed to members of the public, and I just wanted to read one sentence. It says, "I would appreciate the councillors having more respect for the taxpayers who bravely step up to the podium and voice their opinions and concerns." That's what you ask people to do. And I don't think that this writer would, would have a problem with today's meeting. But I also want to point out that members of the public who speak out should also have respect for others, and I do think that today's open to the public have demonstrated that. People can disagree and not have ulterior motives, and people can disagree and not be disagreeable, and I'm very pleased that the tone tonight was much better.
Thank you. Moving on. Communication, old business and council committee reports. Have you got anything else?
I'll give an update. We had a meeting last night at the RSU 20 Withdrawal Committee for the city of Belfast. These are on public television now, much to my chagrin, but so it's almost like Meet the Press on a Monday night. Where we're at, I'm going to ask for the council's help because we talked last night, and I've spoken to some council members. The timeframe that we've set out as the city of Belfast includes dropping off the finished plan to the Department of Education by October 23rd so that we can have a March 15th vote. And the reason for that is so that if the vote were to pass on the plan that we submit, that the new RSU would have time to form by June 30th, when takeover in July 1st. Also, it gives the current RSU 20 board, that's the middle of what I would call their budget season, so they would be able to determine whether it had been successful or not to include in their budget Belfast and other communities. We are going to need to, as part of our plan, have had negotiations successfully completed with the RSU. And Susan Woods has volunteered from the committee to be on the negotiating committee, but I, we spoke last night as a four-piece. Ben, you were there too, so it was five. Ben's part of the committee, because he shows up every Monday. But I've asked Michael Hurley and anybody else who, it would be one to two meetings, Roger, or Nancy, or Marina, or the mayor. Kristen Collins is going to be asked, she's representing the city as the lawyer, to be on the negotiation committee with the RSU specifically. We've put in a lot of work. Susan would represent the committee, but the rest of the committee felt the four of us are doing an awful lot of work, and that the city council would be invaluable in offering its support to one or two negotiations sessions for the committee, and it's all well within the statutes. So throwing that out there, the timeframe would be between September 4th and probably early October. I can get back to the council with dates. I think I mentioned it at the last council meeting, but the committee has now said yes. We'd like to have Susan Woods from our committee be on the negotiation committee, but then the rest be made up of our lawyer and a couple of members of city council if possible. So we talked about that last night. Yes?
Well, I'm happy to help where I can. I will be gone some in September, but if I'm in town, I, these are Monday night meetings?
Well, the negotiation meeting with the RSU could be at any time as convenient for our committee and their negotiation committee. In theory, the RSU needs to release, negotiate the release of the buildings in the city of Belfast that we, that are, you know, the high school, the middle school, I presume the superintendent's office that sits on the high school property, CAS, East Belfast. These are schools within the city limits that when we submit a plan, whether it's with other towns or just the city of Belfast, we will need to have had successfully negotiated already with the RSU 20 board before we submit the plan on October 23rd. So the timeline between September 4th and October 23rd is approaching, and it's going to be a rather turbulent time in terms of tightness and things to be done. So I'm just giving you a heads up. You'll be involved if you can. Yes?
I'd be happy to do it if I'm one of them.
I'm going to be out for at least 10 days during that time period, but if it works out.
I'll reach out. I think it's important, too, because the council has spoken about looking at potential standalone Belfasts, à la a charter school vision potentially within the statutes, now that we've ascertained that legally you don't have that legally you don't have to have any minimum number of students to be in RSU. So whatever form our committee takes, we'll know after September 4th. The outline communities of the old SAD 34 actually have a meeting tomorrow night in Searsmont. They've decided to meet together because we've urged them all to join us or rejoin us, so they're all meeting, except for the town of Belmont, which hasn't even scheduled a public vote on the withdrawal yet. So that's where our committee's at. They're working very hard. Dorothy Odell and Susan Woods and Steve Hutchins and myself. So kudos to them. And I did attend the, the new school board superintendent laid out his vision of a five year plan, and it really looked good on paper. It really did. The realities of what you can transfer from paper are hard to see, so they have, they have an uphill climb ahead of them. And the final point I'd like to make, and I won't take up too much time, is Wayne Corey spoke about the school system sort of indicated we needed to shine a light on it because the increase in the school budget is a major cause of property owners' 10% increase. I went down to school board and actually urged them not to cut funding anymore than they were proposing. They were looking at much more drastic cuts. There's really nothing, in my opinion, left to cut for students, and I still aim towards looking at the students and the education. So I, I get what Wayne is saying and I agree, let's shine a light. We still have openings on the school board and Belfast has the most seats on it currently in RSU 20. But the reality is, it's a two edged coin. You can cut, you cannot have higher costs coming from the school district, but you're going to get much less bang for your buck, and sometimes you get to bone and you can't cut anymore. So it's a precarious situation and appreciate the public's input. Join the school board, please, if you're interested.
Mike.
There's openings and people haven't taken out papers for, how many openings are on that?
I've heard a paper was taken out by one person, I don't know who that is. My understanding, we currently have Alan Wood, and we have Stephanie Wade, and you guys can help me name them, Dorothy Odell, and who else, Joe? I'll put you on the spot. Dean Anderson. So I know of four current Belfast folks on the school board, so that must be leading to two openings.
So we have six openings?
We have six.
Six slots?
Yep, six out of the 18 people.
Is he still?
I don't know. I'm not sure that he is. But if so, we would have one. But six out of the 18 board members are, of the RSU are Belfast, so that's one third, it's weighted voting, and if we don't have a full representation, we'll have less say in the direction of the RSU 20 if it remains. So again, that's where I'm at. The withdrawal committee is meeting next Monday. Kristen Collins is going to be there, Bruce Malo will be there, and some residents from Swanville are coming with questions. And it's at 6:30. It's on TV or you can come down.
All right. All right.
I really appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Same here. Have we heard from, any other news from the other towns that have not yet decided? I know you give them a deadline.
I can give you a quick update. The, the update that I've heard was positive, Swanville voted three, four, none against one abstaining and looking to join us in mirroring the SAD 34. That's Swan, that, excuse me, that's moral. Swanville is very supportive and they are, and they have a premature committee that, because they're still waiting for the paperwork to come back from submitting the, we had to submit on July 23rd our intent, three month period, but the people that are going to be on the committee are supportive and they'll definitely be available before September 4th. We chose September 4th as giving us six weeks before October 23rd to work with other communities to create the best plan for the new RSU. Northport, I've heard nothing negative from, but to be honest, I haven't heard any, any, anything at all. They have come to a couple of meetings and they seemed in support. Searsmont, one person is very much against it on the committee.
Against withdrawing?
What's that?
Against withdrawing?
Against withdrawing. She's currently on the school board and said so on public TV that she's very much against it, which is fine. There's one person very much for, the other person I haven't met, she's a former principal, Ms. Crosby, I think her name is. And then the other person is a selectman who's looking at the numbers. A lot of them came back to us and said, "Show us the numbers." And I said, "You know, this is not really our job to show you the numbers. The job is for all of us to get the numbers. So let, let's know if we're in or not and then we can, we can get the numbers." We have the debt service level to deal with, we have numbers to pull out, we have all of the students enrolled in the school from last year, what town they're from, what grade, so we can create a model administration, buses, things like that relatively quickly. Bruce Malo has joined our group unofficially since he was recently the superintendent and wants to, you know, wants to see that the plan submitted is the best one possible for the, for the city of Belfast and Swanville. So everybody's looking good. Belmont has not responded to, from what I've read on social media, has not responded to emails from people or calls, so I've just heard loosely that they plan a November meeting. Keep in mind, Belmont has no schools in its community, so I do think Kristen Collins will verify this, she has a copy of the RCP, but towns that wish to join our new RSU after we formed it have 18 months, up to 18 months to do so for the new RSU to admit them, so we could bring Belmont right back in. So that's where we're at, a lot of fluid parts.
Anything else?
Complicating.
C and none. Going to permit petitions and license consent agenda. Get the motion.
Please accept the consent agenda.
Discussion? All in favor? B1, Joe.
B1 would be request from Belfast area high school librarian education fund to have a fundraiser at Steamboat Landing and use boathouse chairs and refrigeration on Monday, August 28th. If there's someone here to speak to it, they can come forward to the microphone.
Hello, my name's Maria Sivilius. I'm the vice president of the Librarian Education Fund, and this was a fundraiser we held last year around this time, so we were just hoping to hold it again, and I think it's the 27th, is it Monday, not the 28th?
Yes, it is the 27th.
Yeah, so that's the day we're looking to hold it. We want to have a concert from 7 to 9 that night.
Next, next Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Right. Well, I support it completely, but we, I, I just wanted to bring it up as a different thought was we, you know, we just approved the PAWS thing you said for almost a week. And it seems almost fairly rote that if somebody comes in here and asks us, "Could you forgive it?", we forgive. And I don't think we've ever said, "No, we won't forgive it." And I'm just, I, I think it, you know, at some point here, not right now, we ought to have a little policy discussion about how much are we going to end up forgiving it, because it'll end up being the whole year just about, so anyway. I'd make a motion too that we support this and approve it and wish them well, and oh, there you go.
I'll second that.
Discussion? That isn't interfere with anything else scheduled at that time down there, do we know?
Not that we know of at this time, no. We haven't heard back from Cindy Hardin. I believe this group was, speak with her directly, but there's a wedding that's going to be out of there by noon on Monday. That's what we know at this point.
I, I spoke to her already and we're not allowed to use the chairs or anything that they have, but she said it was fine that the wedding would be out of there.
You're not allowed to use the chairs? You mean, are there special chairs for the wedding or something?
Uh, no, we asked if we could use boathouse chairs, but I guess the folding chairs they had there, they gave to the Y, so she doesn't have any chairs there that would be allowed to use, so we have to like get those from somewhere else.
You mean to take outside?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that those chairs have to stay inside.
Yeah.
And where are you doing this, inside or outside?
It's outside.
Oh, it's outside. I thought it was in the boathouse. No?
In the parking lot or?
Um, it's right on like just the grassy area right next to the boathouse.
Maybe I'm mixed up. I thought it was in the boathouse. Okay. So.
I think the YMCA will loan you those chairs if you ask them.
Um, yeah, we are, we're talking to the high school as well, but, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Have fun. Good luck. Second reading of the new design review ordinance.
I'll be somewhat brief in my comments and perhaps provide an opportunity for the council to discuss or answer any questions. As the council's aware, this is an ordinance amendment that you've looked at back in March and May, we're now bringing it forward for second reading. The council, after having conducted the hearing tonight, really has one of four options. You can either adopt it as presented, you can choose to reject it, you can choose to amend it, or you can choose to table it. If you adopt it, the provisions proposed go into effect basically tomorrow. If you choose to reject a portion of the ordinance as presented, essentially the, the ordinance provisions that were adopted in 2008 that required mandatory compliance with the committee's recommendations for the area in yellow, which is a limited section of the downtown commercial district, will no longer exist. If you reject the ordinance, what it means is that everything within the red area, as well as areas with inside the bypass, would go to a mandatory participation voluntary compliance, which as the ordinance was originally set out in 2001 prior to the 2008 amendments. If you choose to amend the ordinance, what I ask for is guidance, so you tell me what to amend, we'll write the provisions, we'll bring it back for a second hearing. If you choose to table it, it's just that table it to a date certain. The heart of this proposal really is based upon the 2008 amendments. In 2008, as noted, the city decided to implement mandatory design review for the area in yellow. The council, at some of its discussions back in March and May, talked about expanding the area, and the decision that was put forward for bringing forward a proposal was to include all areas within the current downtown commercial zoning district, the waterfront 1A zoning district, and the waterfront mixed use zoning district. That's identified by the area outlined in red. What that would mean is that any major proposal to alter the exterior of an existing structure, to construct a new structure, or to demolish an existing structure, would be subject to review by the committee and the applicant complying with the committee's requirements. I would note that this ordinance does include an appeals process, has been in effect since 2008, so if an individual feels that, a property owner feels that the committee has not acted appropriately, they do have an opportunity to either file what's known as an administrative appeal, saying that why the committee may have erred, or also asking for a variance, for some relief from the actual terms that were put in place. As in a March 13th, uh, March 2012 report I put out to the council, I noted that where to date, there had been 13 projects that are going to be reviewed within the yellow area that were subject to mandatory participation, mandatory compliance, and that to date, that there had been no appeals filed of what those decisions had been. If this ordinance goes forward, as well as it makes some changes as to some of the permits, should they be a type one or a type two, for example, type two are still mandatory participation voluntary compliance. It has a few changes in the selection process for the committee. It does make some changes to the appeals process as well, but really the heart of the proposal again comes back to the area that would be subject to mandatory compliance. I would note that in advance of tonight's hearing, we sent a letter out to all property owners in the zoning, in this area in red. They're all together, there's about 135 property owners, there's about 135 properties, of which there are about 105 owners. So there's quite a few properties that have multiple, individuals own multiple properties. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the council about the specific proposal and how you would like to proceed.
I just want to say that when we talked about this back in March, initial time, the thrust that I understood that the council was taking was that we were considering expanding the mandatory compliance area to include some of the property between downtown and the water, specifically along, you know, Miller Street, Spring Street, down that area where we think that there could be development in the future. I was really shocked when I saw this map and how much area would be subject to mandatory compliance, the Belfast center, you know, and the Camden National Bank and McLeod's and, and places that, that although they're on the outskirts of downtown, they're newer buildings, and then they're also surrounded, and many times they're surrounded by areas that frankly, I think anything that was, would be done to them would be an improvement. And I, I do understand that gentleman who spoke, for the most part, these are small businesses and they don't have the resources a lot of times to comply with, with some of the suggestions that are made. Everything that's constructed in the city has to, you know, meet code. If it's a new use or something, it has to go through planning board. I just think it's too onerous, I think it's too large an area, and I would like to see it cut down.
Marina then.
I'm in agreement with Nancy. I, I was against any kind of mandatory compliance from the beginning. I still believe that this was an overreaction. You know, we, our architecture is important and the spirit of Belfast is important. It's just as important as the architecture. And when I look at that addition, I think, you know, that's kind of Belfast, you know, it's, the uniformity, I, I support having the mandatory compliance in the downtown, in the yellow section that we've, that we've identified previously. It's historic architecture, but I have to say that when I see Alexias and when I see the laundromat and it's fine, you know, it's fine. People keep saying, "We don't want to become Camden," you know? I spoke to one of the counselors the other day and he said, you know, I, when I first ran, I said, "I don't want us to become Camden, I want to keep the gritty quality." We are doing just fine. We are doing just fine. And I am in complete agreement with Nancy. These small business owners, they don't need to have one more hoop to jump through, and there is nothing wrong with hap, I mean, the other thing about this is just as Mary Mortier said, you get outside of that, those yellow boundaries and you have such a hodgepodge anyway. To, to say that, you know, you're trying to keep some compatibility, I, I look at these places and I say, "Compatibility with what?" What you have is eclecticism. You've, you've got an eclectic architect, it's kind of funky and it works. It works. What we have works, and I don't think we should change it.
Well, I don't think we should expand it to the extent that's been proposed. I don't support the extension way up the river and up to the Belfast I don't support the extension way up the river and up to the Belfast Center. I mean, most of that is a boatyard and a, and an industrial, I mean, a, a McCrum plant. I, I, so I'm saying, I, for the reasons you give, I don't support that, and certainly I don't see any need to have it include the Belfast Common and, and the, the other, the parks that are really not subject to development anyway. I could see extending it to the waterfront. I think there are some buildings there that, that could benefit from the review. And I, I would not support this at all if it were not for the fact that as it is implemented, as it works on the ground here in the city, it's not onerous. If I had any wind of it being onerous, and that the people on these committees were really being unreasonable, I'd, I'd get right in here and work to repeal this. And I think that the, the board has to appreciate that. So, I, I don't know whether we should bother to enlarge it. I do think that the waterfront could use some review, perhaps. I, I, as I said the last time, I'll say it again, I own a piece of property on Spring Street that is outside the yellow and inside the red. So, it, it does affect me. I happen to think that it would be a good thing, even though maybe my pocketbook someday would be affected by it. So I don't think there's a conflict in my supporting, in my discussing this, but if the rest of you think it, I should stay out of the vote, let me know. But anyway, I would definitely not do this massive expansion.
If we agree to keep the existing area and the existing ordinance, I would, I would seriously consider Mary's suggestion to increase the number of individuals from five to seven for each, each property that they review, because I did watch the, the shipyard process, and it is subjective. And I think the more individuals there are making that decision, the less onerous it would be on people.
I mean, I, I just, in my, in my personal experience, once you get beyond five on a board, it becomes, becomes unwieldy. It takes too much time for seven people. That extra two really makes a difference. We're five, the planning board is five, although they have extra non-voting members. I, I think five's a darn good number. I don't really understand why adding two more would improve the result. As I say, I think the reason this, reason this works is because the five, those members who are on these boards of five realize that they've got to be reasonable. They can't be, you know, taking a hammer to the folks who have businesses in this town. And I think the process works well because it provides an opportunity to discuss possible improvements. And the, the couple of times I've been involved in this, I know how a particular, two of these went, they went pretty well. The only one I can remember thinking, "Wow, this is ragging out, it's taking longer than it ought to," was one where the, the county was asking for approval to, to change the district court building's roof. And in the end, the city did the right thing. They let them take down the shingles, the slate, and replace them with, you know, with asphalt. But the process kind of took a long time, and there were five on the committee. I was just thinking, if there were two more, it probably would have taken another 45 minutes.
Wayne?
A couple of things. One, the boundaries I brought back are the boundaries that the council did discuss at your meeting in May. I just want to make that clear, is that where the boundaries I put back on this map are the same I showed you in May, and it reflected the zoning district boundaries. I, too, would speak against going from five to seven. I would note that today, we actually have a process that involves three for minor permits, type 3 permits, and it seems to work pretty well because they're very, they're much smaller improvements, and those are all mandatory participation voluntary compliance. I think if we went to seven, it wouldn't add a lot to the process. Five focuses generally gives you a good round of, good blend of experience regarding who's involved. I would echo the comment that Council Lee suggested, that is that where there are five councilors, it seems to lead to some pretty spirited debate and an opportunity to come to a decision. Similarly, the planning board has five members with two non-voting alternates. That seems to be a pretty good workable group. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it would add a lot to the process to go from five to seven, and it may make it more difficult to pull together meetings on fairly short notice. What we've attempted to do, because this is a committee that meets on an as-needed basis, it's not a every Tuesday, every first Tuesday of the month, or every fourth Wednesday. When an application comes in, what we try and do is schedule it within the, within a reasonable period of time, usually within two weeks, sometimes within five days for minor reviews. And one of the opportunities to be able to do that is to try and pull together people fairly quickly. And going to seven may make that process a little more difficult.
Mike?
I don't remember, I guess I was on the, I was mayor when we passed this. And I was opposed to the mandatory at the time, and I was, in particular, opposed to the footprint of the yellow. I think to exclude as many critical properties, to me, was, if you buy doing it in the yellow, then you should buy doing it in some of these other thing, areas. And in particular, just this kind of like oddball walk-around it did around the Co-op and down the back of Pendleton Lane, and, I mean, it's, that is gerrymandering. That's exactly what that is. And it's also, I mean, it really demonstrates also a lack of vision on the part of, I mean, a lot of people who, until they can actually see something, they can't actually envision it. And so, that's how you end up with some really ugly stuff. I argued at the time that for all the years that Belf, downtown, that area, or that entire area, has been redeveloping, it did it very well, pretty much 98% of the time, without any design review. And I can, you know, you can just, you know, until you, if, I know nobody remembers, or very few people here remember Brambles, the shop Brambles, that was the Driftwood Bar. There was no front on it. It looked like something out of World War II. That's the way it was for three or four years. You know, until you saw whatever that gallery is now on the corner, just below, next the corner from Tracy's Diner, that entire building sat at an angle, like that, because the foundation was out of it. And where, where the good table is, completely renovated, or Jay Fisher's building out back behind the Co-op, which is about, I think, other than Front Street Shipyard, is like the only new building that I can, I keep trying to remember, where's a new building that's been built in that entire red area in 30 or 40 years? And I think that's it. Just the building behind the Co-op, it's called Mountain Builders. They didn't have to go through design review, though they did, at the time, successfully fight the city, because the city said it's, it's in the fire district and you have to build from brick. And he said, "Well, okay, show it to me where it says that in the code." And, geez, doesn't. But for years, we'd been believing that. So two things for me. I either support, first off, I do not support dividing neighbor against neighbor, which is, I, my wife and I own the Colonial Theater, so I know what it means to be right in the middle of that. I don't know why you would pick and choose a very small amount of neighbors who are very close together, McLeod's Furniture might be a good example, 50 feet away, 100 feet away from me, or down the other end. Why wouldn't the laundromat be included if that was knocked down and a new building was going to be built there? Why wouldn't that be in design review? How would that possibly not? So, either it should all be voluntary, or it shouldn't be voluntary, it shouldn't be mandatory at all. And I think the district should either be larger than that yellow, or it shouldn't be there at all. Lastly, what I would really like to see, and I feel like we really miss, is any reporting on how this process is actually working. We get told, "It went great," but we're not hearing that from the 13 or so people who went through it. At the time, one of my complaints about it was that I felt that the group of 20, or however many, reflected a smaller group viewpoint than I would like to see. Maybe I can get over that. But I would like to, if we're going to do anything, I would like to see it include, do it for one year with a reporting, you know, requirement, that every one of these gets reported back to the council, because I really want to see how it's working, as opposed to just passing, and then we're told, "Eh, it went good." I don't know how it went.
Well, in the interest of trying to reach some kind of agreement that we could, you know, three or four of us might support, it, it seems to me that this, this stretch of, of the district that runs out here, along the waterfront, and then up to, to, I call it a red and white building, Belfast Industries, that, I suppose you could argue for including it because, because except for Belfast Industries, it's all, it's already under design review, mandatory design review via contract zoning. Isn't that?
There's only two properties along the waterfront that are specifically subject to contract review.
No, but I, I'm not talking about the waterfront over here, I'm talking about the piece, well, look, how are we going to, how are we going to get through this? Because the details are, I can see, it's not going to be possible to do in this meeting. It's, it's lot by lot.
I'd be happy to do another workshop and bring it, do a workshop and bring it back, but, you know, I'm...
Let me just say that...
If you support, if everybody supports going, you know, the whole thing to red to mandatory, okay by me. I'm not a great fan of mandatory, but if it's good for them in the yellow, it's good for everybody. And if it's not good for them, then why should it be good for everybody?
Marina then, Roger.
I just disagree with you, Mike. It's different architecture. McLeod's is beyond, you know, the, the Colonial Theater is a historic building. It's important that buildings along High Street, those brick buildings, be maintained, you know, that their architectural integrity be maintained. It is not important that McLeod's gets anything more than mandatory review voluntary compliance. And the same thing with the laundromat, the same thing with the, that is a hodgepodge over there. There is no, there's no consistency, there's no, and the town is not suffering from those buildings. So I, I disagree with you. I think that the boundaries of the yellow make sense, because for the most part, you've got historic buildings there, and to expand it is unnecessary. You know, I think, I think people benefit from the mandatory review. They can listen, they can, you know, and they can incorporate whatever design suggestions that are made, but it's ultimately, it is not going to make a big difference. So...
Well, maybe we need to... Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I make this point. I, I don't think the yellow line is perfect, because it's hard to argue, for example, that the Co-op and the laundromat are clearly outside of, not of any need of design review, yet the building at the corner of Spring and High, and I can't remember what it's called, but it has a variety of shops in it, including a hairstylist and so forth. I don't know, that building is pretty far away from the architecture of the original city, and, so I think it's somewhat arbitrary where the yellow line went.
It is.
Okay, so you accept that the yellow line itself is somewhat arbitrary. Okay. That's, I just want to make that point.
And the, I mean, the red one is too. You could, you know, it's...
Yes. Okay. So I just want to, want to argue that the red one has the advantage of it being the downtown and the waterfront zoning districts. And so, it, you know, they, those district boundaries do exist today, and there's something to be said for using the same district. And I disagree, and it's somewhat arbitrary, but I'm arguing for it.
Yep. You know, maybe I misunderstood the whole purpose of design review. I didn't realize it was so targeted on, and in which case, maybe we just need to go building by building and say, "This building, these people will be targeted for extra heavy treatment from government." But because somebody has another building next to it, they don't, like, why are we including the mini mall? I mean, why are we including Alexia's Pizza? Why shouldn't they be able to do anything? I mean, it's already a, you know, a three, two-story building. I thought the idea of design review was an overall approach to, that, you know, you just wanted good design, whatever that may be, whatever that, you know, and I, and I support that, generally speaking. But when I hear, well, I'm just not sure which way you're going, because you said, you know, "Hey, Rolies, that looks great. Okay, but we want design, mandatory." Kick their butt if they don't do it, which you've kind of went both ways on it. So, to me, either you just take it off, let it happen the way it's happening, the way it happened prior to this, and, and really, you know, drop this patronizing sort of, "We're picking the buildings" line, or you expand it and you say, "Good design is good for that whole area." And I could support that, but not, not the individual targeted building.
So I, I like it. So I'll be, I, I like it for the reasons I think Roger might have said, or Michael. But, you know, I like, I like the idea of safeguards to ensure that our entire downtown is handled correctly, and it's not, to me, it's not a McLeod's issue or, or a Colonial. I could make a case that Roger said that, you know, "Why are the commons in there?" That's, that's, that's a fair point. But I, I look at our downtown and I look at what Front Street Shipyard has done in the last 15 months, and I think it's fairly spectacular. So I don't, I don't necessarily view, view design review as a bad thing myself, or a positive thing. It can, it can have merits on each side, but I think it's a protection, I think of it as a protectionary step to ensure that everything that does get rebuilt in our downtown is done right. So I, I don't disagree with anybody's points that you've made. I just don't see the harm, I think, I think ultimately, your downtown is going to be growing rapidly, and I said that, I think, in May or June. I, I think your downtown is, is not just the yellow, but I think it's expanding. So I don't see the problem myself, since we have a yellow in the downtown, and I view the downtown as being wider than that or going that way, that you would extend it. Don't disagree with anybody's points, that's just my opinion.
Roger then Wayne.
Something is fundamental to me, and I, years ago, I, I've been working with Land Use for years, and I don't remember who it was, but it was a long time ago, and he, he made the point, and it's very valid, that you got to watch it. If you don't have a problem, don't write regulations to try... If you don't have a problem, don't write regulations to try to improve something, because, you know, it, these efforts that we're undertaking have some value, but unless there's a real problem they address, it's a mistake, because government is imperfect, and, I mean, we're all imperfect, private business is imperfect, but why get, so I don't think, I disagree with you, Mike. I don't think we can say this is really just to have good design, because if it is, then it should apply everywhere. It should go out to Rennie's, and, you know, down Route One to the river. I mean, we want good design everywhere, so why don't we have government get involved and create good design everywhere? Well, that, you can see that's a bit laughable. We wouldn't want that, because, so, it's hard to define, but I see this always have as protecting something that is in our downtown, that is the reason people come here. It is attractive. It is, you don't find what we have in our downtown on every square mile of the state or let alone the country. So I don't know where you draw the line, but it isn't, it isn't just creating good design in the downtown. So, it's tough. This is, it's important, though, and I don't know how we end up with a fair boundary. I would rather keep the yellow than run the risk of losing this, though.
Yeah. A couple of quick comments. First, this is not the red brick design ordinance. If you look at the buildings within even the yellow area, there's a significant number of buildings in that area that are clabbards and such, that have no brick involved. I can go right across the street, then be clean. The oldest building in the downtown, which I understand is Tracy's Diner, show me the brick. I mean, it is not the red brick ordinance. It is based on a compatibility code with how buildings are oriented to the street, what the amount of glass is, what the amount of opening, what the relation of heights to one building to another building are, to try and keep a character in the downtown. Secondly, a couple of things about history in Belfast, as far as design. Until 2004, when the new waterfront district was identified, the 1990 ordinance specified how all buildings would be built on the waterfront. Clabbards, shingles, no metal. You know, that was the rule. Oh, brick, I'm sorry, you could throw in brick. So basically, everything was just built at Front Street Shipyard before 2004 would have been illegal. Roger, you mentioned, maybe this should go all the way out to Rennie's.
I don't understand that.
No, for good, no, for good. I've got to make a... We already have mandatory design standards...
I'm thinking about the motorcycles.
No, we already have mandatory design standards in place for the Route Three Commercial District, the Route One South District, Searsport Avenue, a good part of Route 141 and Mill Lane through the planning board. They're not the design review standards and the design review ordinance, because they're the only, the different issue. But we have design review standards that were adopted in 2001 for those zoning districts.
But, but confusion, they're not like this one. They're not, they're not aesthetics, they're not, they're not the same as we're talking.
Yes, they are, they are different. But what they are, is that they have a design that must be met. And what they were reaction to partly was the old code that was adopted in the early 1990s, that said, "Every building on, in the highway commercial districts shall have a pitched roof of no less than a 312 pitch." And we got away from that type of standard. So when you look, is when a project comes forward, they must go through a design review process through the planning board, applying standards, which are about four pages long, actually, those standards are longer than the standards you'll find in this code, that applies for every building that goes forward. Those are mandatory today, and they've been mandatory since 2001. It's just a different process of applying it. So I just want to make it clear that there are mandatory standards in a good portion of Belfast's commercial districts today for non-residential structures, and that where this is, is looking at how it applies into a downtown area, which most folks, from what I understand, have referred to as being the most critical area of the community, as far as design is involved. I am open to accepting any type of direction the council wants to provide, and be happy to come back with how you'd like to proceed.
Corina, then Wayne.
You know, I would hope that we could come to a decision tonight, because we've got more important things to do. And it's been working well with the boundaries that we've had. Yes, it's somewhat arbitrary, but we've got more important things to do, and I want, first of all, I want to thank the Design Review Committee. They have done a fantastic job. And when I look at those metal buildings of the shipyard, and, you know, I expected these monstrosities, and, and they are big, but there's something about them that's beautiful. I mean, somehow, they managed to come up with a design that is beautiful for what they are. That's, that's a remarkable feat. But I just, as Roger said, this, this can get out of control, and, you know, the only egregious design disaster that I have seen in this town is that house on Union Street. That is the only monstrosity. And so, so why aren't we addressing that? Why aren't we saying, you know, "Every new residential construction needs to go through mandatory design and mandatory review?" I think, I think it's, I think there's a problem with expanding, and I don't, I guess Mike is more sensitive, maybe, to this sense that, you know, the person next door doesn't have to go through all these hoops, but we could, we could spend the next six weeks arguing about what a boundary is that makes sense. We could, we've been arguing about this forever, I mean, we've been talking about this forever, and what we have with the yellow boundary works. It's not perfect, but at this time, we've got too much going on to ask our city planner to go back to the drawing board.
Right. Jeez, I thought we just recently heard we've got a really heavy planning board, a planning office with nothing to do, so, I don't think it's unfair, I think it's important. Inside that yellow, we mandatory require property owners to go through this process, and I don't think it's asking a lot of government to go through a little process of its own before we just kick it down the road to those people inside that yellow line. I can't support the mandatory inside that yellow. I think it's unfair to those property owners, because I think it should naturally include some, a larger area. Not that big red area, but, you know, if, you know, and I say this not lightly, I mean, I own a building down there. I own the Colonial, and I'm very sensitive to the idea of what it would have been like, and I realize Wayne will always tell me, "You can paint anything, any color you want." But I can always remember people coming up, and once we painted it, from sort of an awful yellow, horrible brown color, to the colors it is today, and people were quite shocked by it, you know, and there were people who said, "I don't care what anybody says, I like it." Meaning, everybody was saying they didn't like it. I don't know. You know, so, but I'm very sensitive to owning a building and knowing what that process is. I've been through it personally in other towns. I think, generally speaking, it's a good process, it's a helpful process, but if it only applies to a very select few, I think it's a flawed process, so, it's on that.
Could I recommend that we just table this to a workshop, where we work out some details around the table with a map in the middle? I mean, that's open to the public, just easier to work on details like this.
Yeah, I would support that.
I was going to just make a recommendation. Some of you have talked tonight about how maybe the red district's too big. It's just a wild idea. Eliminate the public property on Front Street and Cross Street, and the reason you eliminate that is because the entire town's going to watch whatever you do with that piece of property, and they're going to weigh in on, no matter what happens, and they're going to hear about it. Same thing's going to be true on the property owned down here, between, you know, between the surge treatment plant and Belfast Boatyard. So if you eliminate all this, you eliminated that, and then you could feed into the idea that Councilman Hurley was saying, sometimes there's safety in numbers. We won't be so tempted to be stern with people if we have more people affected by the review. And then put a two-year sunset on it, and have a report come back on every application that goes through, so you can monitor as you go. It reduces your district, but it makes it bigger than the one it is today. It gives you a two-year thing to go with. It puts all different kinds of properties involved, so it's a little less subjective, and, you know, and you have a two-year sunset on, just an idea.
I was going to...
I was just going to say, I support that.
Okay. I was going to suggest one thing also. When this first started, like you say, I believe you were mayor at that time, when they was talking about this, this was all created so a number of people could help one another keep the integrity of the whole community, the city, and stuff. And I say, do away with the yellow, and adopt that red, and make it all non-mandatory, because I think that's a word that's killing everybody. Let it, let it become part of the ordinance, but make it non-mandatory. So everybody has to go through it. And if, if the committee can show where it will help some of the business, fine and dandy, but it isn't mandatory that they do that. And I think you'll find most people would appreciate that aspect of it, rather than, "This is where it's going to be, the committee's done it." Because I see how many times, how many bites of the apple that that committee had when the shipyard was going through, through their ordeal of getting permits and stuff. And you take, it can be quite intimidating to the community, so if you made it non-mandatory, but take in the whole red, so everybody in that red has to do it, fine and dandy.
Okay, that's what we had before, and it didn't work.
Where didn't it work?
I mean, well, I mean, people can disagree about it, but I think the top of Roly's, it didn't work.
Well, understood.
They were, it was recommended that they build something that wouldn't have cost anything more. It would have worked, but they chose not to. And it, I don't think it worked. I mean, you can argue that it's minor, you know, one or two like that, it won't matter, but if it keeps up, I think you'd lose something, and so that's why I think the core needs to be protected. The point that, about sharing the burden, it seemed attractive to me, what Joe said. That's really what Mike's point is.
Yeah, the other thing is, if it was to save the integrity of Main Street and Pata High Street, just make those, those two streets the mandatory part, and forget the rest of it. Because that's what it's doing, would be saving that part of the community that's in the historic. It's a historic part, even though that, you know...
I don't see how we could have it both ways.
Yeah, well...
Yes. I make a motion to table it, do a workshop, and bring it back.
Second.
All in favor?
Good idea. Uh, update on the Haberwalk.
I'll attempt to stay on a very narrow path in my update, as opposed to getting into questions of bonding and such, because that's a later discussion before the council. And what I mostly want to do is identify, is that should you choose to go forward, the memo I provided to you on August 17th identified a tentative schedule as to be able to how That schedule would call for us being able to submit changes this week to the third round of comments offered by MDOT on the plans, which only became known to us on Wednesday of last week. And then, MDOT must review and approve such, our intent is to submit those on Friday of this week, and we anticipate MDOT requesting the Federal Highway Administration on granting the approval to proceed to bid, which we believe could occur by the 29th. MDOT has identified that it'll take five, a minimum of five, and more likely 10 days to get FHA approval of the project, which mean that the earliest reasonable date to look at would probably be September 11th. We could probably issue the invitation to bid about two days thereafter. It would take about three weeks on the bid process, with a pre-bid conference being held as well. We would then look at evaluating the bids when they come in. That bid date we're estimating is October 4th. Evaluate the bids over about a week, come back to the council in your October 16th meeting with a recommendation. Clearly, if the numbers come back, and the numbers are not ones which people are content with, we will then need to look at how to be able to revise the project. If we have to revise the project, we will need to go back with revised plans, revised engineering drawings, and to MDOT and obtain their approval of such. That process, depending upon what the extent of those revisions could be, could be anywhere from 30 to 45 days. So it'll be really critical as to be able to look at what the bids are that come in, and be able to evaluate such. Let's pretend for a moment that things actually come back, and the bids are pretty favorable. If we had come to you on the 16th, we had looked at being able to enter a contract somewhere by the 30th of October, and then going to a pre-construction meeting with MDOT staff and such in early November. I did note, I provided each year a copy of the final cost estimate for the project. It's $1.606 million. That cost estimate does include a 15%, 15% contingency on all items, so if you kind of extrapolated out the contingency out of that amount, it's probably about $200,000 to $225,000 in the contingency. So we're uncertain about how things may come in. What I've suggested to you is that it would be a good idea to actually go to bid, so we're no longer working with estimates, we're actually dealing with reality, just about what bids would be, and then trying to make the decision as to how to proceed. I offered some other comments for the council to think about along the way, and I'd be happy to discuss those at any point in time, but that's my brief report on where we stand.
Any questions for Wayne? Seeing none, we'll move along. Update on signage efforts in the city, and possible requests for funding for additional work.
Council previously has approved the installation, the preparing and installing business, essentially directional signs for Belfast. We've installed signs at all the locations in which you see a number, to date. We've installed 14 of the signs, and there are three others on which I may be seeking guidance. But I also noted in my memorandum to you, is that the initial budget for this was about $13,000. To date, we've probably expended closer to $15,000 to produce the signs. Some of the costs were associated with adding one additional sign, essentially when we put one out at the, near the Belfast-Searsport line, and still retaining one in by the bridge, that added about $1,000 to the project cost, as well as what we did is we enlarged the size of some of the signs, particularly the font and such, and that resulted in some small increases in the cost of each one of the signs. What I'm also looking at is that we have not installed all the signs which we initially had talked about. There are three remaining, and I did not want to spend any additional monies to produce such unless the council thought it was wise. I will note that we already have one ready to go, I just haven't installed it, haven't picked it, because we could put it on one of two of the locations. With the three signs that we have remaining, there's one that we had talked about, is putting right in by where the fire station is. There would be an East Belfast sign. Bob Richards and I have identified a potential location just beyond the fire station before you get to Autozone. You do have to limb up one of the trees a little bit to create some visibility, but it is in a place that won't interfere with either the fire station or visibility at the intersection. We also talked about potentially putting one in along High Street, when you come off the 137, basically coming in off of 137 coming to town, to just tell people how close the downtown is. There's really only about one location you could put that sign, and it's right by Wall of Arts, and it's where the sidewalk kind of jogs out a little bit, and there's a small spot there. spot there. The other sign that we had talked about, and these are all those interior signs, is putting one just before you get to the intersection of Church Street and High Street, as you're coming in on Northport Avenue. And that's when you're coming in on that stretch, it's about 1.4, 1.5 miles, when you come off the jug handle, and telling people that the downtown is just slightly ahead.
Now, where would that be specifically?
That is, if you...
City Park?
No. The place that we identified is just, I don't remember the names of my houses, and I apologize for that, but it's probably about 400 feet to the south of the Church Street-High Street intersection. And it's between, I always refer to it as the Pilot's House, because where Jan Yaw and such used to live. And it's the one that has the big turret on the top, across the street from the White House B&amp;B, just slightly in an angle, and the house just adjacent to it. And we'd be looking at putting it right on the, basically on the property line between the two, off the sidewalk. In there, there's sufficient area between where the sidewalk is and where Northport Avenue is, be able to locate a sign, and it doesn't interfere with any of the things that are in the ground, being able to put it in that location. Plus, it's still close enough to the High Street and Church Street intersection, it tells people kind of go this way. And so, those are the three that would be out there. We do, we can put either this one or this one. I actually had, that one's basically paid for today, because it's one of the older signs that we had, it's one of the draft signs we had, it's a little different. And the other ones, if we wanted to do those, it's about another $1,000, if you want to do the other two.
Wayne, my only question, and maybe to the council or comment, is, look, A, the public needs to know that I've heard nothing but spectacular things about the signs. So, the signs look great, and they are very helpful. My concern about that one that I just asked you about near the church, and, and, I ride my bike here all the time, but, you know, whether you go straight or down church, you're going to end up downtown. So, and I worry in a community, especially in that historical, or what I view as I'm coming towards the B&amp;B, and that historical nature is, I don't know if placement of a sign would add or detract right there. This is my personal opinion, I don't mean to, I mean, there's not a lot of signs there. And I just worry that, you know...
You go through that area, probably the most popular signs are, either one, "Don't park on this side of the street," or "Stop for pedestrians, yield to pedestrians in crosswalks." And there are quite a few of those along the way. There's also speed limit signs and others. We did try and pick, between Bob and I, we tried to pick a location where we thought it could work without having an impact on any of the houses that was there, that would still have a good location in relation to where the sidewalk was, and not interfere with snow removal. But I just am open to whatever direction the council would like to provide.
Nancy?
I used to live on Northport. There is a long, long stretch between the jug handle and where you're saying to place the sign. It just seems that if you moved it out further, to me, when you get off Route 1 at the jug handle and you're going toward town, you think, "Where is it, where is it, where is it?" Because all you see is houses. When the houses get older, at the intersection you're talking about, you start thinking, "I'm getting closer to downtown."
They get closer.
And the houses get closer.
And either way, you're gonna end up downtown.
Right. And so, to me, where there might be some confusion is further out on Northport.
The one location we also gave some thought to is down by City Park.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little, it's a little tight in there with some of the grade differentials between where the sidewalk is and just the edge of the road, because of how it drops off. It's a little tight in there, where if you put a sign, you may block visibility as people are trying to pull out of City Park. And it's something we wanted to be really sensitive to as well, is just the placement of a sign. So, that's the one that we gave some thought to as well, that where we were gonna try and keep it more on city property, as opposed to buy someone's house.
Yeah, but I don't know why you need a sign to be so close, because you've got one coming off the bypass there, and once you get headed up there, and that sign's, I don't know, what's that sign say, two miles down there? Or whatever it says, around that. It's logic.
Well, I don't think, I don't think these three signs are that important. I mean, I think we could save money by not doing them. Not very much money. And I'd like to know what, did you give us a number on what they would cost?
Yeah, it's $1,000 to do two additional signs. We have one already made, all we have to do is change the mileage numbers on it.
Yeah, well, we've only got a made, they're about to go up. I guess I wouldn't do it, I don't think that they're that important. And I think we've heard loud and clear people's obvious concerns about spending. The concern I have, though, is that some of the signs have, just lettering, it's too small, the signs below the major Belfast sign, the ones that are, it's kind of like the three-quarter size signs, that the harbor, downtown, mileage and the words harbor and downtown are so small that you can't read them unless you know they're there, even in daylight. So, I think we should be changing those possibly. And that, but I heard tonight someone's observation that at night, I'm getting the impression that even the full-size signs, the words downtown harbor arts district, don't show up, because, you know, in the, I guess it's that if you get too small, when the light is reflecting, it just is hard to read. I haven't, I haven't gone out at night to see if that's true.
Actually, my experience was probably a little different.
Okay.
I probably found them a little easier to read at night than during the day.
Okay, so it may depend on the...
And I thought the reflectorized paint kind of jumped out at me. And, but that's just one person's opinion.
Right. People have different vision at night, so it may be that that concern was the, because of that person's vision.
I think it's really impossible for any of us to judge what those signs read like. You know, they've done studies about, like, you can see your mailbox from 2,000 yards, but you ask somebody else to find your mailbox, and they can't find it till they run it down. It's, you know, we see it, we know what it says, and so, we think we're reading it. I think the type is small, I think it's probably gonna, on those little reader bars. I don't want to get into replacing them today, but I think we're gonna have to replace them, because I think they're too small. But as far as those three signs, I don't think we need the Waterfall Arts or, I think Nancy's point was really much better. If you've ever gotten off a highway and you're thinking you're headed somewhere, there's that time when it comes like, "Where am I? Am I going where I thought? Did I, did I get off because it said downtown?" I think there's, that's probably a good idea. I don't think Waterfall Arts needs a sign. I think it's good to, when people are coming back out to Route, because when people are in downtown, they don't, they're always turned around and they, I mean, I know people who go to East Belfast, visitors, who have gone out past the hospital, because that's the way they came in. They think that's how you get back to Route 1, and then, you know, so, if they happen to be heading out Main Street and they get up there, it should be, "That's East Belfast to the right." I think that's a good idea. Lastly, Joe, I've mentioned this parking lot behind the co-op, it's a city parking lot. I just had somebody who's lived in Belfast 15 years, she parked there the other night, and she goes, "Who does that belong to?" And I go, "It's a city parking lot. A sign would tell you that, we don't have a sign on it." And it's really, when people don't see a city sign on a parking lot, they assume they're trespassing, and they think they're on somebody's private parking lot.
I learned five years ago that that was a city parking lot, and it's...
Right. So, a sign would be great, even if it's only this big.
Even if it's one of those P circles.
Something.
Those signs were finished today.
Oh, good.
For the parking lots.
That's good.
They are. Parking lot signs for downtown, they were finished today.
Anyway, but I do want to say, I think, I've heard a lot of positive comments about the signage in general, but I do agree, the type is too small, and we can fix that as we get going.
So, if I take direction from the council, we will not construct the two new signs. I will work with Bob to install a sign on Northport Avenue, preferably somewhere back by City Park with the one that's already designed. It doesn't cost us, the only thing we're gonna charge for is the post to go in. And I, if that's the consensus on that, and then I do need the council to allocate $2,000 additional dollars for the work that we've done to date on the signs that have been installed.
So, we need $2,000 for the existing signs. Do you think you need money to make the print larger?
No. My understanding is we're not gonna do any of that. If we're making the print larger, we're gonna spend real money.
Yeah, I don't want to do that right now.
I think we should wait, because...
Fine, it's fine.
May find something else you want to change.
The city put aside some money, $20,000, to build a server here in City Hall, and we, Jenica and staff members spent a lot of time looking at it, and what we realized that we need is more is to back up our files, rather than the fact that we can share our files. The city planners' files are not necessarily fascinating to the city court and vice versa. So, we feel that we have ample money to move $2,000 from the city server capital project to this sign account.
I agree. I'll make that motion, and we do that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
What about the paper?
Joe, that was good news there. Thank you.
We didn't discuss the bigger, making the bigger cost.
Request from the Belfast Point Operate Laundry to remove a tree in front of their building, as it will be blocking their new sign, other sign.
I tried calling Mr. Jakes to, missed him, missed him in Belfast, missed him in Benningore, and I don't know, I don't know if he heard that, I believe Bob Richards measured that. I believe it's on private property. As the guy who planted the tree many years ago, I understand his problem, and I welcome the opportunity to catch up with him after tomorrow, and, but it's basically his tree.
Right. Well, it's too bad it would, that we'd have to lose it. It's a nice tree, and we don't have many down there that size, but if it's private, that's it.
Okay.
Would they have designer people?
You would. Not me.
A request from the city manager to transfer 1,993.56 from the capital project for purchase in a server for City Hall to the city's Goose River hydroelectric project review.
Right. Just to be clear on that last matter, we're making no decision, because it's a private tree on private property. Is that my understanding of the council?
Yeah, very clear.
Church tree.
You do what you want with it.
You understand that, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I want to make sure I understand it, too.
I don't like to come down either. I had to move those tanks off of, after 30 years, off of my neighbor's property, which he was very nice to let us do this for 30 years, and so, took half of my parking lot. And those look like, we all know what they look like. So, if I do take the tree down, I will put some vegetation and something follows something to kind of take that ice floor off of those tanks. I realize they don't look good.
I just want to say one last thing. That laundromat's very important to this city. Certain services located in certain locations are very important to the community. You guys did a great job running that laundromat, and I know it's much appreciated by people who come in on boats, as well as people who live in those neighborhoods and can walk their laundry to your service. It's a very important business. Back to us.
I just want to say, I use your laundromat, and it's the best laundromat I've ever been to. And the people you have working for you, they are, they are the best people.
It's an institution, it's great.
Now, going back to item F, I would move $1,993.58 from the same capital project for City Hall server to cover the expenses in evaluating the Goose River hydroelectric project. I would move that from the same account.
So, moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
So, second reading authorization for the city to borrow $800,000 from the main municipal bond bank, but restricted on behalf of the Harbor Walk. I guess at the outset, I did talk to bond counsel today, and he said, "If it's unanimous agreement with the council, I don't have to read the entire resolution as I read at the last council meeting, but if one of you wanted me to read it, I would read it." So...
No, thank you.
I need to know the will of council. Do you want me to formally read the five-page...
Well, does bond counsel want that unanimous vote, that you not read it? They're very picky.
Yes.
Okay, I make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? The lower.
However, you did an excellent job.
I used to draft those, so I don't know. Consideration of a request to borrow up to $400,000 through a bond acceptance note to cover the governance freeze on the city's award of a community for main future grant.
We're doing two together in G and H?
No, I think we should do them separately. The first one, we should go back, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, to number G, which is the $800,000 resolution.
No, we just did that.
What we did is we voted that I would not read the resolution in its entirety in the record.
No, I took that as a motion to approve the borrowing. Yes.
No, no, we're not going to.
I don't know if it's over 10 years or 20 years yet. I would need, I would need to know from the council whether they want to borrow the money over a 10-year period or a 20-year period.
I took that as a motion. I was voting for, I don't know who made the motion and seconded it, but I thought I was just voting on Joe not reading.
On Joe reading, yeah.
Because I thought we would at least be discussing.
I made the motion, that was my motion.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you're supporting the motion of the resolution, I still need to know from the council what your perspective is on borrowing for 10 years or 20 years.
Marina?
I suggest that we have a 20-year bond, and the reason for that is our payments will be lower, we will pay more interest rate, but because the value of money over time is worth less, it actually comes out to be less expensive. You know, 20 years from now, our income should be, will be probably four times what it is now. You know, I've looked at prices of real estate here, and the price that I pay for gas, and it tends to, it tends to go down a half every 10 years, and so, 20 years from now, it's about a quarter. And I, and I also think that we're gonna need that money for other projects, so we're gonna want to have, have some money to draw from, from that TIF. I'd also just like to explain to people that if we approve these bonds tonight, nobody's taxes are going to go up. This is coming out of the TIF account from taxes that are being generated primarily from the shipyard. That TIF district was created, I don't know, five or six years ago, and the intention was to have that money be used for projects, and the Harbor Walk was one of the, one of the projects that was mentioned. So, nobody's taxes are going to go up because of this. We're not gonna be drawing from surplus. We, you know, the bonds will be paid off from this new money that we have from the shipyard. And that money has been designated for these projects, there's, you know, because it is a TIF, there's no way for us as a city to take that money out for general funds. And the reason for that is, I guess, because the TIF money is not included by the state in our valuation. So, in a lot of ways, that's good, because the shipyard has increased the valuation of our property in the city, but it will not be held against us in municipal sharing. So, consequently, our taxes won't be going up for that either.
I'll speak to both G and H, but I specifically to G, I support the $800,000. I support a 20-year note. It is my, having looked at the numbers as I looked at it, we, we will, we will all benefit and pay for through TIF money most, if not all, of the Harbor Walk. I see down the line, infrastructure to Front Street being paid out of this. It will pay for itself. The very thing that increases the TIF will then be used as monies to pay for the loan. The 20-year, the interest rates in the 20-year, I think, by design, compared to a 30 or a 15 or a 10, I think 20... or a 15 or a 10, I think 20 to 10 is slimmer in terms of payback for us to have a 10-year. So I support 20 years and, you know, so, and I'll speak to the 400,000 separately.
So I agree with Marina.
I'd like to also point out that we are contractually obligated, according to the MDOT, to construct this walkway, so.
If we accept their grant.
We accept their grant. And the way that we can pay for this is with the TIF. To me, a 10-year note takes almost the entire TIF and leaves us no money to do further enhancements of the infrastructure in that area and we all know that Front Street needs work badly. I'm sure that as development increases down there, we'll find other things that need to be improved, so the amount that we would have to use from the TIF for the bond repayment is much more, gives us much more room to use for other, other projects.
I, I support the, the bond, I support the Harbor Walk, I support the 20 years as the payback period. I want to respond to a few points that were made earlier tonight. I think it's important that they be responded to. I think many members of the public may feel if we don't, that, you know, we haven't really thought them through. I, I think we have. It was said that, that somehow this Harbor Walk had lots of opponents, it doesn't provide any payback, there's no benefits from it, there are places to walk now in the city, why spend any money on it? Well, it, it comes back to that fundamental point that if, if we as a city, all we do is keep the roads paved and keep the sewer lines flowing, our city is going to lose in the race for new business, for people moving here, for businesses to invest here. We need to make Belfast a really attractive place. If, if you don't agree with that, you know, run for city council and take us in that other direction, but I support that approach and I think it's paid off handsomely. I think the fact that the shops are full, that the Front Street Shipyard came here, that Athena Health came here, is because we've spent money, city money, over the past 20 years to make this city a darn attractive place and I'm proud of it. I've only had a little bit to do with it in the past five years. So huge payback, not, not the payback that you can add up with a calculator, you know, anyway. TIF pays for the bonds, the TIF generates in this coming fiscal year, a little over 100,000, once the building down by the footbridge is included, it's closer to 140,000. If we use a 20-year note, the bonds will cost 70,000 approximately, I think, in the first year and then it slides down some, so there's about, we're using about half of the taxes that have gone into the TIF from the shipyard. There'll be other monies that go into that TIF over the next decade or more because Belfast is an attractive place. It's, it's seeing lots of people recognize that and there'll be investments, further investments like the shipyard, there'll be more money that goes into the TIF. There'll be enough money to fix the, to Front Street in lots of places. As far as the, the point that, well, we don't need this Harbor Walk because after all, there are other places you can walk. Well, we didn't build a Harbor Walk to provide walking, a place to just walk. This is, this is, again, something different from that. It's a place where you can go down and socialize. People will be attracted to it. When people come to town, they'll say, hey, let's go down to the Harbor Walk. It's, you know, we can see the water, we'll go by the shipyard, there'll be, there are restaurants down there. It's, it's far more than just a sidewalk for walking. And, you know, again, if you, if, I, I'm proud of that. I, I think that we've made the correct decision in building something as attractive as that and it will mean a huge difference over the next decades to the economic growth of this city, things like it. There were some smaller points that, oh, a major point. It was suggested by at least one speaker that, oh, we can just pay for this Harbor Walk with private fundraising. It is possible to pay for some things with private fundraising and it might have been possible to have paid for something even as large as this if we had started years ago, I mean, way back at the beginning, before the city got involved. If it was a private project conceivably and the city got behind it, we could raise that money. But once you've gone as far as you have with this project and the city is as involved as it is, you could never turn this around and get the public to contribute privately to support it. It, it's impractical. Look what happened with the footbridge. It was, it was asked of the public that they contribute 100, 150, something like that because we were a little short in finishing up the footbridge. That never happened. People just didn't contribute because they saw it as something that the public, through its taxes, had paid for and they weren't going to go out and, you know, sign up for, I'll be the sucker who, who'll contribute to something that the government really is intending to pay for and that's the way people react to something that government is paying for. But there's nothing wrong with government paying for some things because there are things, there are projects that just wouldn't happen if you depended on private financing for them. And I think this one is large and while it probably could have been done with a huge, huge effort, it, it would have been tricky to do. It's a lot of money. And so I, I think we've done the right thing in having government do it. It would be impossible at this late stage to expect that it'd be turned off and done privately. It would never happen. There've been some, people have suggested that we start at the north end and work to the south end and somehow that's going to make things easier. This project has been designed as a whole. Everything is in, is, if we want to redesign this and start it and do it in phases, it'll cost tens of thousands of dollars in redesign time and we just can't do that. If we're going to do it, we've got to do it all. And somebody asked if we take into account the fact that we've retired some of our bond commitments recently and we have, that the $65,000 that we were paying in the last fiscal year is not in our budget this year. So that, that went toward other things, but it's not available toward, to be applied to this and the TIF is going to pay for this, this project, so, thanks.
Eric?
I'll defer to Mike. I was just introducing something at the Colonial, this, trying to remember what was going on. Anyway, 1975 Belfast waterfront looked really different. You said, Roger, 20 years. It was actually 28 years ago that we did, actually, the, you know, the reconstruction of the downtown, the tearing down of the grain mill, the creation of Heritage Park, that's when that happened, 1984, that year. It was really the beginning of the turning of the difference and, you know, that Belfast, up until that point, had pretty much just been allowing itself to be buffeted by the forces and that was when they started fighting back and it's, it's never stopped. Nancy sent out a question about the Bangor Walkway and, you know, one thing interesting about Bangor and their walkway and their revitalization efforts is that even though that town has changed dramatically in political terms, in terms of councils and mayors and managers, they've really stayed long-term focused and really continued to move that ball forward on the, especially on their, in their, on the downtown and the waterfront. And so today they're announcing, you know, I don't even think there's any question, they were going to go vote for it and have it out to bid and have it built, finished by springtime. But it was that long-term vision and I think that is so critical to getting something done long-term is, you know, you debate the ideas and then you've got to figure out how to do them. I, I can't tell you how many people come up to me and say, especially if I'm ever walking on the walking bridge and they, you know, I thought this was a really stupid idea, but now it's, boy, this is a great idea. I've heard that hundreds of times and I did not agree with them. I thought that bridge was a great idea and it turned out to be a great idea and it's going to be even a greater idea when it's connected to this. The walking bridge, thank you, I don't know where anybody thinks that, you know, public funding or fundraising built the walking bridge. They may have come close to 75 grand or 80 grand or something, but Belfast taxpayers voted, Belfast voters voted in favor of rebuilding that bridge and Belfast taxpayers are paying for it and I think it was a great investment and I think it's going to continue to pay great dividends and can only imagine had we not built that bridge, had we voted to let it go. Would have been a really, really sad thing. Lastly, when I ran for the city council, I come with ideas and people know I have them and people I think should judge all of us. You know, there's a great difference between people who don't have to put it on the table and fight for it and argue about it and work it out and defend it and really think about it, but I do and I think about this stuff all day long, all night long, to the detriment of my personal and business life and I've seen a lot of great work happen in Belfast, a lot of great changes and I think we're on a really good track and that's how I, I'm not going to say that's how I roll, but I think that's how Belfast has moved. Even many councillors in the past who I disagreed with, you know, we managed to keep moving these things forward and we've, together, and I don't, I don't think anybody can, in this town, can take any credit individually. I think collectively, we are all reaping the benefits of a lot of vision and a lot of hard work. So that's what I've got and that's what I'm going to keep doing, keep working.
Eric?
I just wanted to add that I was at work this morning and a lady came up to me and said, apropos of nothing, said that she had a two-year-old son and that they went down to the.
What did she say?
She had a two-year-old son and last night they went down to the footbridge for the first time in a long time and he ran across the footbridge because he's two and, you know, that's what two-year-olds do. And she said, you know, great bridge for a kid to run on and she said, my goodness, I turned around and saw everything, because they hadn't been down there in a couple of years, and she, she said, you know, what a difference already from the footbridge, looking down, including Front Street, I'm sure, but the whole nature of the waterfront. And it's the right time of the year, right, as opposed to February, but just spectacular, busy and looking really good. I've had, I've been on the council three years in November, this idea we came to market with had already been percolating in the city for a while about the walkway. In three years, outside of a couple of folks regularly lately, with appreciation, I have heard nobody come up to me and say, what a lousy idea. I've had nobody come up to me and say, you're not going to spend money, that much money. Everybody's been extremely supportive about this and I, so you've got to spend the money to, to have it happen, right? So rubber meets the road. I haven't heard the feedback that it's a bad idea. I've long told the council publicly, I thought it was going to cost 1.5 to 1.6 million and you guys said, hey, maybe not. It did. Good. Three years ago I went to Bar Harbor and they, I know they had to spend over a million dollars to cut some rock when they redesigned and built their gravel walkway along those billion-dollar homes. But the economic payback, ask Bar Harbor. Ask, and I'm not saying we're Bar Harbor and we're not Camden, but we're Belfast and we have a really nice opportunity here, for not just today, but for 20, 30, 40 years down the line. So nobody's, nobody except out of respect for a few people lately have been complaining about it. I think it's probably the easiest decision I've made and one of the better ones to support.
Marina.
Well, if it's been your easiest decision, it's been my hardest one.
Yep.
Things have evolved with this decision and things have conspired to make this a very difficult decision for me and a number, a number, and I take responsibility for the complications that have arisen. When we first started out as a committee, one of the first things that I said to our contractors for the design is, can you give us, you know, can you give us a couple of alternatives so that, you know, if there's some cheaper alternatives, we can talk about this? But it was very clear on the committee that really people were not interested in the money side of this. They, they just wanted it to be as nice as it could be and money really was never an issue. And when we started out, we were in a different situation. We had a $4 million surplus. We had regular ambulance receipts that were accumulating so that each year the surplus was growing. And then things changed and, and we started getting less money from the state, we, our ambulance receipts came down, we started spending off the surplus in an effort to try to keep taxes level. And then we lost the 400,000, then we shocked our residents by having to raise taxes 10% because of the school budget, the county budget and our budget. But the other thing that has changed is that the downtown was really struggling still when we started out this process and it is no longer struggling. It's thriving and I'm really happy that it's thriving, but because it's thriving, I, I really question how much of an impact this Harbor Walk is going to have. And, you know, I was a very strong supporter of having that footbridge, building that footbridge back. I, I could see that and I, I appreciate it, but I, I guess I feel like a rudimentary footpath with a few places for people to gather. At this point, if I could turn back the hands of time and go back two years, I think, I, I think I would have done things differently. My, my learning experience from this is as a councillor, when, when, if and when I've ever on another committee, again, it is my responsibility as a city councillor to keep on top of what it looks like we're going to be spending and to constantly be looking at that and be asking questions about it and, and I don't think I did a good job with that and, and I think the reason was because we didn't have all these issues. We had a healthy surplus, we, you know, we, we kept having money come in and, but in the future, I think that my, I would hope that any of us serving on a committee would. where we're building something expensive, we look at the costs and we pay close attention to it. The other thing that I'd like to say is, I really have heard what people have to say. And I think that, you know, when we, if we build the rail trail, I certainly don't support the city being the major funder of the rail trail. I think that it does have to be private citizens who do a lot of the fundraising. And maybe there's a match. I don't know how it works out. But it's certainly not going to be the same process as it's been for the harbor walk. And the same thing, if the Crosby School becomes available to the city, people in this city who have financial resources, who want to see the city have what they want to have, they've got to come forward. Because there are people in this city, you know, as we see the downtown getting better and better, there are people, generation, multi-generational Belfastans, elderly people who are getting further behind. And their property values are not increasing because they don't have the desirable properties. So I want people to know that I've heard that, that I'm going to be on top of watching these kinds of projects. And I've got, I did want to say that I was surprised to hear Blaine say that there was a lot of opposition to the harbor walk. I never heard that in the committee meetings, in the public meetings. I don't remember hearing strong opposition to it. Having said that, it's important that people give their views. If people don't feel comfortable coming here to talk, please call us. You know, please talk to us on the phone. And I'm not, I am not just Ward One's representative. We're all here representing all of the wards. You can call all of us. If you don't think one of us is going to be receptive, then call somebody else. But call us, email us. I'm certainly happy to meet with somebody and talk to them. And we're all very open to that. So we're quite approachable, I think, all of us. And I think that's all I have to say. I have had a lot of people call me and stop me on the street lately, and they're hurting. And I want them to know, I, that's what makes this decision so difficult. But I have to say, I have a responsibility to this council. I have a responsibility to the committee that I've been working with. And I wish that this harbor walk were not as elaborate as it is, but I do support it. And I have a responsibility to, to the people that I've been working with. So I support it.
I sat on that committee, Marina, and I'm sorry, but it's not accurate to say. It's simply not accurate to say that the committee did not pay attention to the cost of this project. I don't do anything in the city government without paying a ton of attention to the cost. And it was always the subject of cost. We decided, you know, from the beginning, for example, nobody talked about anything but asphalt. Because if, to put down something else across the whole walk would be, would be much more expensive. We had a session where we went through, toward the end of the process, but after the design had really been, you know, finalized, not finalized, but it had gotten into the detail, we looked at various ways to save money. And we cut some things out.
At the very end.
Yeah. But it's just not, you're giving the impression, which I don't think is fair, that we went ahead and just said, you know, "The sky's the limit, guys. Build the best you can." That's simply not accurate.
I just wanted to say, I don't know that the committee understands what a TIF is. Thomas Kittredge, our Economic Development Director is here. If the council wants any clarification on what a TIF is, he can speak to it. If you don't need it, you don't need it.
Yeah. Couple of quick things. You know, we just had this, we're having a great summer in Belfast for, you know, I think it's really important, there was a great article in the Free Press where a Rockland city councillor took the city council there to task. And, you know, he just ruled them out, point by point by point, basically saying Belfast is fantastic and Rockland's really in trouble. And that was it. And, you know, it made me think, I had to drive up to Holden, and I had to go over to Callis. And by the time it was done, it was like 480 miles on Sunday. And so I got to see a lot of northern Maine, and got to see a lot of towns. And, you know, Belfast is kicking butt right now. And, you know, we were down on the mat, and it got back up. And yeah, we're getting better. And I really take issue that, "Wow, he's up. Let's take away all the resources that got him to stand up, and let's see if we can just knock him back down again." Marina, that's a really dangerous thing. Let me finish. I didn't interrupt you while you were speaking. I'd like to just, let me finish. You keep calling it thriving. I have one of these businesses. I spend time with all those business people. They are not thriving. They are not raking in the bucks. It's a better year than it was. But it's a tough, tough job being in business. And thank God, it's doing a little better than it was. So let me just finish here. Opposition? Hey, I've got to believe there's a hardcore 30% of Belfast that thinks this is a dumb idea, absolutely minimum. That if you put it to a vote, you'd have absolutely a minimum bedrock, 30% against it, maybe up to 47, hopefully. And I think, you know, but that's not my job. I'm here as the city councillor to decide these things. I think it's a great idea. And, you know, I appreciate there's opposition. And I'm hoping that in my lifetime, people are going to come to me, "Wow, that walkway, that was a great idea." And as far as the expense, I just want to go, I, you know, would I prefer this thing to come in for 800,000 than 1,600? Yeah, I would. Is that possible? I'm sure we could cut, cut, cut here or there. But you know what? In 10 years, no one's even going to notice that. So I'm, I, you're having, I called it to Roger. I said, "Marina appears to be having decorator's remorse. I don't know about that. I think in the end, it's going to be a great project. And I think it's important to get it done and get it finished." So even though you're having second thoughts, I'm not, and I continue to support it.
Let me, I want to-
I just, I have to make a rebuttal. You know, Mike, when you make those categorical statements saying, "I'm trying to knock everything down again," it's so unfair. I mean, it is, it's not what I've been doing at all. So, you know, it's just an, it's an unfair characterization of, it's, you make it sound like I just, you know, want the downtown to just go downhill and not, I mean, I've been, I have been supportive of downtown efforts, and I just resent that. I think it's a very unfair characterization of my point of view towards things, so.
I keep hearing you saying that the downtown is thriving. So I'm just saying, Mike, I think I know the truth.
Okay. Let me, let me try to make it better for everybody here, again.
You going to pay for it?
Yeah. I'm going to pick up on a piece that Mike said earlier on, and I just want to explain to you. Back in the 80s, early 80s, when there was a pile of granite laying on the shore down there, and a man by the name of Doug Thompson, the chairman of the harbor committee, and we got together and got some money, he did, and broke, made that breakwater down there. They put that breakwater, those fellows was down there every day watching, every rocket they put into that breakwater that's there today, and that old grain mill when she come down. That was the start of things. You go to Thompson's Wharf, man's name is Thompson, and you'll see a piece of granite over there. And on that granite, it says "Envisionary." That harbor committee, I will say, envisioned, maybe not on such a large scale as what has come, but they envisioned this, this whole thing, at a little smaller scale. But it has come so. It's, it's, it's just great, the way it is revolving, that whole end of town down there. If you looked on all summer long, every weekend on these streets down here, I mean, I don't know how well the shops are doing financially, but they should be doing a lot better than they have been because there's people there. Now, if they don't want to stay open to service these people, that's their problem. You can lead the horse to water, but you can't make him drink, you know? And we're bringing these people into the community. The price of this thing, I was worried about it from day one. I really was. I said, "How are we going to pay for this? It's going to be too much money the way that it's, you and Roger both were on that committee, and we went to meeting after meeting, and we see this stuff. And how that was coming along, what we wanted for lighting, that's a big deal, and all of this." That was a lot of money. And I said, "How are we going to pay for this?" And Mike is right again, there's probably 30% or more people out there that thinks this is crazy, crazy in the devil, you know, to be doing this. But I'm going to tell you, I'm in support of it after I found out how we was going to pay for it. And that was with the tax incentive that we get back. Because in Augusta, on these TIFs, when you create, like the shipyard down there, the value that they created, if that went to the community, that means that you'd lose state subsidies, and you would be worse off in the long run than you was if you didn't take that money and borrow it and use it. That's how we're going to pay this loan back. Now, if we was going to have to pay for it out of tax, generating more tax dollars within our personal taxes, I would be jumping right up and down there. But we're not. It's coming out of the TIF. That's how we're paying for this project. And the benefits that I see that's happening downtown right now, with the amount of people that we're having on the streets, you can go down there most any night, 9 o'clock, there's still people going up and down the streets down there in warm evenings. I was down there last night on the town道, 9 o'clock, and there's people down there gathered around, they're talking, and enjoying themselves. And these people, they bring business to town. I get business down there, and I'm way over on the other side of town. There's always somebody leaving their lights on or something. A change of, you know, it's business. That's how I, I get mine. But these shop owners have a different way of getting theirs. Everybody gets a chunk of it. And that's how I can support it because of the TIF, and that's how we're paying for it, with the TIF. Now, if it wasn't for that, now, I would be hollering bloody murder here, and I'm not bashful about that. But I was really concerned about the money. Do I, I figured it out, just what was happening and the amount of money that we was getting from the shipyard into this TIF. And hopefully, we still have a lot of, we still have some property down there that belong to the city that can develop, that'll create into this TIF also, so that more things can happen in that downtown area. Now, if people don't think that's benefits, I'm sorry, it is benefits. And that's, and that's how I can support it, and I will support it. And I've got friends that say, "Walter, what are you thinking about?" And I tell them, and, yeah, after a while, I get through to a few of them, but a few of them I don't get through to, too. So I'm completely in favor of it. I think the council has done a good job. I can understand what you're saying, Marina. You're right in a lot of ways. You're worried about it now, but, you know, this has been coming on, and it's going to be paid for. Let's take a vote on this and move on and get this thing done. We've been dragging it along for three, three-plus years, and see what it brings another year. That's my, I'd say, make a motion to support it.
I move that we authorize the borrowing of $800,000 as proposed.
And that we, if for, is this vote to proceed with the, so we need to, what, what do we need?
We need to authorize the borrowing of the money under the terms as outlined in the resolution for a 20-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion on this? I'll take it to a vote on paper. It's unanimous. Now we'll move on to the-
May I just make one note on that last item? There will be an interest payment due next May on this borrowing. But this time, I'm not asking you to designate how we will make that payment of about 15,000. It could come from the TIF, it could come from what we see from surplus once we see the audit come out in January. You don't have to make that decision for months. I just want to let you know.
Okay. Consideration of a request to borrow up to 400,000 through a bond anticipation note to cover the governor's freeze on the city's award for a community for Maine's future grant. I need a motion for discussion.
I'll make that motion that we borrow up to 400,000 till we can get to discussion through a bond anticipation note to cover the governor's freeze on the city's award of community for Maine's future grant.
Need a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Discussion.
Right here. You know, Walter, I don't know, in your years, how many sewer bondings for one-plus-million did, went through in discussion after discussion without one comment? So I'm in favor of this.
Walter? I'd like to point out a few things that I've heard tonight that I would, I would, I disagree with in terms of points of fact. The voters voted on the, the governor's slow deliverance of the grant, however you want to put it. The vote was taken by the state. It is my understanding that the governor can say, "No, I'm not going to do it." But as of June 2015, it has to be administered. That's my understanding. The other understanding that I would say is, is these are, these are, I'm not as surprised as I was originally when I saw that he made decisions on several towns. I know Walter met briefly down there with some officials the other day. And by all measures, I, I think it's our money. I think, I'm quite convinced we'll get it. It may take till June 2015. When I look at a $400,000 potential loan, if you will, for three years, at the interest rates that I'm looking at, it's around $6,000 a year to cost, to the city. So for $18,000 over a three-year period, I'm not in support of not, not borrowing this money. I'm in support of borrowing it because over 18 grand, we spent about four, or five, or six tonight on a couple of things. We didn't even blink. So on an interest payment, unfortunately, we may have to pay interest of up to $18,000 over the course of time on $400,000. But we may not. He may deliver the money sooner than that. But it was voted on in an election in the state. And the other point which Roger made, which I think is extremely valuable, is that if we hadn't been given the original grant, some other town would have. So they would now have the same predicament that we have, but of what to do to wait to get the money. But $400,000, I'm looking at $18,000 in interest. It also seals the deal to get this project underway today and not, not wait another day. So I'm fully in support of it.
I'm in support of it, too. And I don't think it's going to cost $18,000 because, as I understand it, we can use the 800,000- I understand it, we can use the $800,000 first and we may not be paying those bills until later.
Worst-case scenario, Nancy.
So it's the worst-case scenario. I do think that we will get that money. I think that, that the state is obligated to us for that money by 2015. I have no fears that Augusta will hold on to that money. If they do, then I guess we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it.
Well, Marina?
Well, I, I was originally, when, when we found out that we weren't getting the $400,000 and that we had, you know, the problem with the taxes, making the steamboat landing segment of the walk a lot less elaborate. But doing so would have been so complicated and would have cost a lot of money. It would have, it would have cost a lot of money to, you know, at least $45,000 to redesign and going back and dealing with the OT and, you know, I am far less optimistic about our ever seeing that $400,000. I hope that we do. The law requires it, but, but I'm not that hopeful. But I am in support of our, of our taking out the short-term bond.
Any more discussion?
I just wanna note that I'm assuming the firm motion that allowed me not to read the note in its entirety, this meaning covered both of these borrowings.
Mm-hmm.
Sure did.
We have a motion on the floor. Let's take it to a vote. All in favor? It's a vote. Now, you got H1, is it the?
Yes. It's I1 and that's the salt bid.
No, H1.
Should we award the bid?
It's H1 arbitrage.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We need to make a motion as to who's going to get the bid.
Okay. Forgive me, forgive me for a second. I think we should wait till Councilor Hurley comes back. I did ask for an adoption of a no arbitrage policy, which is a requirement now. We added that as H1. An arbitrage policy says you will not borrow money at a low interest rate, invest at a high interest rate, and make a profit and therefore use the borrowing process as a profit-making effort. And we, we do need to adopt the policy in order to do the borrowing. We can wait for Councilor.
So, I give a second on it?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Discussion?
So this is, okay. Are we gonna vote without Mike?
Yep.
Okay, now, I'm sorry, we did go out and get quotes on the $400,000 borrowing and we got two quotes from Camden National Bank and Bangor Savings Bank. And Bangor Savings Bank was lowered by $300 over the estimated three years. So it asks the council to select which bank we use.
I move that we award it to Bangor Savings.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? We add it is.
Thank you, Ricky. Thank you for reminding me.
Thanks for all your work on it, too, then.
Consideration of accepting the sand and salt bid for Public Works Department and possibly awarding. Now, you wanna do this separately?
We got two bids. One bid is for salt. We had five bids come in. The salt bids were lower than they were for last year. The lowest bidder was Harcross Chemical, but Bob, is that right?
No, it's not.
It was New England Chemical. And Bob Richards, our Public Works Director, inspected the salt and found that the New England salt at $56 a ton was of an inferior quality to the Harcross Chemical at $57.18 a ton. So we would recommend that you accept the bids as presented and award the successful bid to Harcross Chemical at $57.18 a ton.
Second.
Both of those as one motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'll second both.
Okay. Any discussion?
Discussion, quick. Is that why Ricky was here all night?
No, Ricky was here for the borrowing.
Okay. Very good.
The treasure.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, you missed that, Mike. Sorry.
The second is the sand bid. We buy sand to put on the roads as well. We, we put it out to bid. We got three bids. The lowest bidder is Farley and Son at $5.90 a cubic yard. We anticipate buying 3,000 cubic yards. I would need a motion to accept the bids as presented and to award the successful bid to the lowest bidder, Farley and Son at $5.90 cubic yard.
On both?
Second.
On both, Nancy?
A discussion.
Discussion?
I just bought a yard of sand. It's really big. I mean, for $5, that's a great deal. It's a really, if it was a Christmas present under the tree, that would be a really big present.
You would like the sand.
It'd make your house fall down.
I'll take that to a vote. All in favor? Okay. Signing of council orders?
They're coming around.
Okay, well, they're coming around.
There's actually a couple for you to sign in there, too.
Me?
For the, the borrowing. You're on the list.
Me?
You, you.
Best money ass.
Yep.
You said you...
The purple ones.
Okay. We'll be doing that. Open to the public? Please state your name and where you're from.
No, we reversed it.
We did. Yeah, I'm taking care of it right now.
Oh, you're right. Sorry.
There's nobody here.
Nobody here? Okay. Communications, Mike?
You know, for years, Staret Drive has been a subject of conversation because there's no streetlights on it. It's pitch black.
Really?
And could we get a definitive answer on who owns Staret Drive? Not right now, Joe, but, you know, because it's just crazy. You pull off and then it's pitch black from there all the way to Joblot.
I don't need any more light.
Okay. I'd wait. That's one. Two, Nancy, I wanna thank you. You know, you brought up that subject about, you know, interacting with the public. Somebody else tonight mentioned we only get, we don't get paid a lot. I get, I think, $72 a month for...
$78?
$78 a month for being Belfast City Council. I, I don't know, are they talking about me or anybody else? I know tonight I heard somebody say I called the public stupid. I honestly, I'm not saying I've never thought it, but I know I didn't say it. And I wouldn't say something like that.
Keep digging, Mike.
But, you know, my point is, you know, I ran originally years ago because of how council treated the public. That was my reason for running. I'm very sensitive to how you work with the public. But, you know, when you take a beating, the way we've taken a beating in the last couple of meetings, it's really hard not to defend yourself or at least to engage. I realize that standard tactics for leveraging people's feelings about things, you know, that if they're stronger in their comments, they get a bigger bang for their buck. I don't know if I've ever, you know, if I'm always perfect with how I respond. I try really hard. Marina talked about, you know, I am nothing. I'm ridiculously accessible. I will stop anything, and I work for a living. I will stop anything at any time to talk with anybody about any subject in Belfast. And I try to help them and I try to do it respectfully. And I try to answer them. Sometimes you gotta tell them stuff they don't wanna hear. They don't wanna hear that if they're calling you up to tell you they didn't want the walkway built and you're telling them you support it, they're not really happy to hear that. But you gotta be able to talk with them. So I really understand that feeling. I think it's really incredibly important that the council and all of us interact with the public who are here speaking as respectfully as possible. It's one of the number-one fears people have is speaking in public. It's some, they say it's worse than, they'd rather run into a burning building than get up there and stay on that microphone. And then, you know, we're used to it. So I am, I, I am cognizant, but I'm not a perfect human being and I'm definitely not a piñata at the end of the day. So that's it.
You get council orders to sign?
Oh, yeah. I'll be signing while people are talking.
I'd just like to make in the, oh...
Wait, I'll just have a quick point to make. And we voted on the, on this issue of borrowing the $400,000 to get us through to the point when we get the $400,000 from the state. Probably everybody in this room and, and probably everybody listening to TV heard Blaine Richardson say again tonight, I think he said it tonight. He said it three or four times in the past, and he said this, that he and a group of people are trying secretly to work with the governor to see to it that the city of Belfast doesn't get the $400,000 that it was awarded. That is shocking. And anybody who's aligned with Blaine Richardson, I, I'd like to have them step forward and identify themselves as part of this group that's trying to do in the city.
I'm next. I just wanna remind people that there is the property tax and rental rebate program. I believe that we have those applications downstairs. I apply every year. You might be surprised at how high your income can be and be eligible for that. I get several hundred dollars back every year. And I don't own property. I just rent. So, and there are, if you're elderly or disabled, there's a special program that you're eligible for where you get a higher percentage. So if you're not familiar with that program, please come down to City Hall and, you know, if you need help with it, I'm happy to help any resident and I think somebody can, can help you out. But you, you might be surprised at how much money you, you could get back.
I, I just wanna say thank you to the council for resolving the Harbour Walk tonight. I wanna thank Mary Marshall, who's worked hard on it and who helped us get other grant funds to help pay for it. I wish, I really wish as a manager that everything we do is in government was the way we do it, you can do it in business, but it's not. There's just too many stakeholders. There's a lot of analysis. There's different funding sources. There's different consultants. There's a lot of process involved in it. I really apologize to the council because I, I wish we were at this point a year ago, not today, but a year ago. And I'll do everything I can do in the future, should we ever take on a big project, to make it less lengthy than this. But I appreciate all the work that everybody put into it, the committee members themselves, the council members wrestling through the issues. It has been a long, hard slog, but I personally believe as the city manager that this project will pay economic benefits to the city of Belfast for many, many, many years to come.
I just, somebody spoke about, I don't know, like the civility tonight. I came in five minutes late because I was coaching soccer, by the way, volunteer coach for youth. Please do if you can. They're always, it's, it's a great way to, to shape lives. So I come in and I thought, even as I was coming in, things were more civil and they remain so. So I would like to compliment, I don't know, Nancy, I don't know if you'd said something before I got here, but the reality was, it seemed like it was a little more civilized tonight. But I was getting worried personally. And I started getting worried, like I start to question, "The hell am I doing for $78 a month?" You know? Why, why endure such negativity on a, on a weekly basis? Because of some of the hostility that I feel that has been directed at us through, you know, perceived tax increases, the Harbour Walk. And then I, you know, and I guess the answer is because I love, I love what's going on with this city. I love it and I see a lot of people loving it. And I know it's hard work for us, but I wanted to compliment the council tonight because I thought, I thought we, we all, we've all done a really good job in this last couple of years working on this doggone thing, as have all of the people of all the committees. Now the fun part starts. We get to build it. This isn't gonna be the last crises that we're gonna have around here, but it could be the beginning of many more. But, job well done, guys. Job well done.
Joe?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I personally think the council's done a pretty good job. I'll get to this. I didn't agree with all of it and probably I never will agree with all of it, but on the whole, they worked through it. You folks have worked through it and there's been some hard calls here. Everyone's had to make them and you all have shined in my book on this and wish you the best.
I just wanna say, if you think anything drives people crazy, it's when we start complimenting.
Wait, wait, wait. I just wanna say, I just wanna say one other thing. Hang on, hang on.
Thank you.
Is that, you know, we would have built this thing a lot quicker if that Front Street Shipyard hadn't come along, just landed right in the middle of the whole thing, you know? And that's really what's slow to do.
We would have been able to pay for it.
There you go.
Shocking.
I need a motion to a jam.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.